Mindy and Jesse, can you hear me? Thumbs up? Thank you all very much. So at this time, it's 7:21, we are back in open session. And at this time, the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to the pledges, and we have, now we will have the U.S. and the Texas pledge. And tonight, we are honored to have some very special guests join us virtually to lead our pledges. We'll now welcome London and Lander Groppel, who are in second and fifth grade at Grapevine Elementary School. They will proudly represent their school by leading us in the pledges, the United States pledge, followed by the Texas pledge. Do we have them?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? We got, you guys?
Yes, sir.
All right.
We stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, one and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state undergone and indivisible.
Thank you.
Boys, well, they left too quick there, Dr. Groppel. There they are. Boys, thank you so much. You are our first guest, and y'all both did a great job. So thank you both very much. And I know your school is very, very proud of you right now, and you represented them well. Thank you, guys.
Stand back.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for the introduction of our LEAD 2.0 highlight this evening. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, and it's, thank you very much. It's this point in the meeting where we present to our community and to our board about the progress that we're making on LEAD 2.0, which is our strategic plan for our district. And so tonight, we highlight a different portion of our operations in GCISD, and that is our counseling team and how they're working with social and emotional wellness during this time. And so I'll pitch it to Dr. Schnouts.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So as we all know, the physical safety, along with the social and emotional well-being of our students and staff are paramount. And on the social and emotional side, that has become ever more apparent during the pandemic, especially. And so tonight, we have our Director of Counseling, Amberly Hill, along with the team of counselors here to just highlight the supports and initiatives that we have in place to support our students and staff on the social and emotional well-being side. And so I'm going to kick it over to Amberly Hill, who is live via WebEx with us.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to talk about our work on Goal Two. Counselors have been working very hard, as have many other departments, to make sure that we are ready to support our students. And I've got several friends here tonight who are going to go into more detail. The counselors have been working over the summer with the curriculum department to make sure that we have embedded some social and emotional supports in the curriculum so that it's smooth and easy for teachers, and it's just part of how we do classroom work. Additionally, counselors are ready to support both in-person and remotely. There's all kinds of things that counselors have already been doing and are prepared to do once we have students back in our buildings. And I want to go ahead and pitch this over to Mandy Coburn, who's going to talk about some of the elementary supports that we have in place.
Hello. Hold on just a second. I was, I thought the PowerPoint was coming up. So some of the things that we have in place for elementary school is we have our new Character Ed program, which is Purposeful People, also through Character Strong. And with our Purposeful People, then we are having, we worked with Curriculum and Instruction to have lessons for the teachers so that they could embed those through the first few weeks, and we have those available. And we also have used Purposeful People, the curriculum, to create some circle-ups for the teachers so that they have those and they're pushed out through CSO. The lessons were created in English and Spanish for the teachers and for the students. Should I stop? It looked like the PowerPoint was coming up there. Do you want me to keep going?
We can hear you. We can hear you again. Go ahead.
And so the Purposeful People lessons are, we have those for the teachers to pick through, but we also want schools back in session, or if we're not, if we're still remote, depending however it's going. We also have lessons that the counselors will be pushing out at least once a month, maybe twice a month, from CSO to be teaching the kids about our character traits that are in, each month, there's a character trait for each, for the students to learn. And along with that, there is a newsletter from Purposeful People in English and Spanish we're pushing out to parents. There's also some activities if we can be on a playground. So there's activities and games that focus on those character traits that the teachers can work with the students on the playground. There's also challenges for the teachers. So the challenges are something the counselors will push out so that we can work on those character traits, not just with the students, but also with the teachers and also with the parents. On the newsletter, they're able to work with their students, talk to them about the different character traits as well. We also are focusing on our small group or individual counseling, and we can offer that through the WebEx or in-person, once the students are in-person. That's a little bit about elementary world.
Can we go ahead and move on? Is Kristen available?
Yeah, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Kula Booth. I'm one of the counselors over at Colleyville Heritage. And I'm going to just jump in a little bit about how we are working with our secondary students and families remotely and the plan for in-person as well. So we're doing a lot of what we discussed in elementary, where we have partnered with curriculum and instruction. And through each of the four core subject areas, we have embedded social and emotional lessons that the teachers can push out. They're already written for them, and they can be through synchronous or asynchronous learning. This first week that just passed was a lot of focusing on relationship building, not only from the teachers to the students, but also the students together and just kind of learning our new platforms. For us, that's Canvas for the younger ones, it's CSO. And so through social studies, we're working with our guidance curriculum that is Character Strong, and they'll be doing lessons each week for five weeks through their social studies class. Science, we're focusing on different character traits, just a lot like the Purposeful People, but on a secondary scale. And then in English, we're talking a lot about journaling, definitely addressing feelings that students had from the end of last school year, and then fears and wonderings going into this one. And a lot of practice and teaching on empathy and gratitude and just grace as we move through this interesting time. And then in math, we're talking a lot about emotion regulation, and that's what those lessons are about. And so with that, they are talking about mindfulness, checking in on your body, how to serve others with emotion regulation, and understanding the feelings that teachers, other peers, younger siblings, everything that everyone is going through all at the same time. So I'm going to pause here on our last slide and let Mary Newland kind of talk a little bit about how we're addressing all grade levels at once to close this out. Maybe I'll just close this out. So at the end, we kind of wanted to just pull it all together, how we, as a Guidance and Curriculum Department, district-wide, have been working together on really supporting our students from a holistic perspective in the elementary, middle, and high school. The biggest part of being able to do that as counselors is just being engaged and available. And so that is the big thing that we're pushing with our students and parents, is how they can get in contact with us and how they can communicate with us their needs at the moment. We are doing welfare checks on students and checking on our at-risk students, working with our McKinney Vento students. We have needs assessments and surveys going out to parents, teachers, and students so that we know exactly how to write those guidance lessons moving forward district-wide, especially as the students come back to us in person, those that choose to. Our lessons are going to continue, just like Mandy Coburn said, to be posted in Canvas and CSO. And those topic-specific lessons will be modified based on those surveys that we run. And then, of course, counselors are having live WebEx rooms open during different office hours. We all have, you know, our email up all day, just being very open to anyone as they need us. So that kind of pulls together, not only working with curriculum and instruction through the classes, and then our guidance lessons being pushed out, and then just being available and assessing what we need to do as the Guidance and Counseling Department moving forward. I think that's it.
Thank you, Kristen. I would just like to say a few more points of things that we've done to help prepare teachers. And we've already done training on trauma, mental health awareness for our teachers, our nutrition department. We've prepared a pre-recorded training for our bus drivers and nutrition staff. We're helping them to understand how to refer students who need help and how to watch for those signs that mean something might be wrong and we need to get a counselor involved. Additionally, counselors are helping students navigate SAT, ACT, and college applications and all the anxiety around this at this time because things are so different than they are in the normal world. And so those are, those are just a few of the things that we're doing to work towards Goal Two, make sure we're taking very good care of our students and their social and emotional well-being. Do you all have any questions for us?
Thank you. Becky, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Kristen, thank you so much. And Mandy, it's good to see you, too. Obviously, the timing on this program couldn't be better. Kristin, I really appreciated you mentioning the fact that counselors are available via WebEx. I did see, to Amberly's point, I did see in our Mustang Minute, for example, the availability for SAT, ACT, Go Center-type information. But Kristen, you mentioned that WebEx time is available. So is that something that a student would be able to see in their canvas, but how would a parent, what would be the best way? So can you talk me through both how a parent could reach out best and how a student could reach out best?
Definitely. We, at each campus, at Grapevine High School and at Colleyville Heritage, and I can only speak to the high schools specifically, but we have appointment request links that come straight to us. So we get the email that somebody would like to meet with us, and then we reach out and schedule that however they would like. Some, it's a phone call, some it's a WebEx. And then we're starting to have open office hours, maybe an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, just that we have our WebEx personal room open where kiddos or families can jump on and ask questions that are not of a personal nature, just to be available instead of sending eight emails back and forth.
Okay, so those WebExes, those are actually open? They're not a private one-on-one thing?
Correct.
Okay, good to know. Good to know. All right, thank you.
I'd like to jump in and answer that a little more. That same option exists for, I think Mandy was maybe going to speak to elementary. It does exist in middle school as well. If a student wants a private WebEx with a counselor, all they need to do is reach out in the way they say that, "I want to get ahold of my counselor," whether it's a QR code or a link, and the counselor will schedule a time to do a private WebEx with them as well. Or, and that would apply for parents as well. Counselors are happy to meet with parents.
On the elementary end, we also have the same. We have the, "I would, I need to talk to Mrs. Whoever, whichever counselor." And so those are being pushed out through the principal newsletter or the counselor newsletters, and also through the student CSO. So it's on there, and if they need to talk to the counselor, they can click it, fill out the survey, and then it'll send us an email, and then we can set up a private counseling time with them.
That is great to know. Thank you. Do we have any other, any other questions for any of the counselors? Ladies, thank you all tonight for being with us tonight, and I know Jennifer's with us, too, but thank you for filling in for her. And thank you for all that you're doing. And as you said, Kristen, at a time that is so challenging for parents and children and students and teachers and y'all. So thank you for being open to listen to our kids and be in their form when they need you. So thank you all very much.
All right, so our next item is recognitions. And we have one recognition. It's the Board Honor Code. At the start of each new school year, our Board Trustees, along with students across the entire district, sign an honor code. And by signing this honor code, our Board commits to nurturing a climate of honor and integrity and respect and tolerance and trust for all members of the community. And the signed honor code will be posted, as it always is, right outside of the boardroom here. And so who has the honor code? Okay.
Thank you.
President Pardo has the honor code. Our trustees will sign it this evening.
Lisa, do we want to read that, maybe?
Yeah, I'll read it. Honor Code Pledge. As members of the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District community, we will nurture a climate of honor, integrity, respect, tolerance, and trust for all members of the community. These traits will help us be successful, both in work and in life.
And Mindy and Jesse will have it here for when you are able to come in and sign with Kim.
And that concludes tonight's recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. We will move on to open forum, and we have several that have signed up to speak tonight. So I will turn it over to Trustee Noel and let you go from here.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the open forum section of our board meeting. Any person who is not scheduled on the agenda may address the board via video conference during the open forum section of the board meeting. The request to speak Google Form must be submitted by 6:45 p.m. prior to the start of the meeting, in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The board is restricted from discussing or taking action on items presented during the open forum if the item is not listed on tonight's agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered. In addition, this is not the forum that the district has provided to raise and resolve complaints about individual employees or students. We request that persons speaking in open forum on items not on the agenda refrain from raising complaints against such individuals or personally identifying them in any way in their remarks unless it is pursuant to the district's grievance policies. Please contact the appropriate administrator to address your comments or concerns. There's generally a three-minute time limit on individual presentations. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask, but it's not required, that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for each group. The board president may extend additional time at her discretion or shorten the allowed time for each speaker to not less than two minutes if the speaking requests are so numerous as to hinder the orderly conduct of the board's meeting on pending business. At this time, we have received 26 requests to speak forms for open forum. The district will add to the teleconference, and each individual will be announced in the order received. I see that the first, I see that the first speaker signed up tonight is Mr. Adam Owens. Mr. Owens, please state your full name and address and proceed with your remarks. And we will, we will have a timer on the screen, and you've got three minutes.
All right. All right, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Thank you.
All right, sounds great. Well, my name is Adam Owens. My son is Grayson Owens, and he's a kindergartner at Brandsford Elementary. Our school and our teachers are amazing. We really appreciate it and keep up the great work. I understand we're still on schedule for starting in-person school on September 8th, and thank you for keeping that decision intact. The thoughts I share with you this evening are to keep in-school person learning an option, even if and when cases come to our schools. It is as safe now to open our schools, according to the experts, as it has ever been, and many parents today also believe it's now safe for us to go to school. We need to keep an in-person option going because our district has a great safety plan put in place to allow families to select the right choice for themselves. There was lots of time and effort involved in creating these protocols and equipping our teachers and staff with the proper safety equipment. With all this in place, it is safe and will continue to be a safe environment for our kids, our teachers, and our staff. We can all agree, we're all different. We all have different circumstances at home and work, and we all have different tolerances to risk. This is why giving families the opportunity to choose what is best for their children should be the decision we utilize going forward on September 8th and in the future. My family's had to make choices to attend vacation Bible school, church, daycares, birthday parties, other social gatherings throughout this time. We have done so because these events have been safe environments for us, and even though school may be shut down, our families, our kids, and many others have still been living life. We hope you will continue to offer this option for us in the future. In fact, in lieu of in-person learning at the school, many families have been sending their kids to private schools, daycare facilities, day camps. The list goes on and on. This has been going on since the start of the shutdown. Don't you remember the 15 days to flatten the curve? Well, we're now well over 150 days. We've proven that it's now safe to resume in-person learning. Please let us have that choice and keep us having that choice. I do believe that my kindergartner should be at school. He wants to be at school. During one of the WebEx lessons, he turned to me and said, "Daddy, I know all of these things. I want to go to school to learn more." Another time, he turned and asked and told me, "When will I be able to get to play with my new kindergartner friend?" So you can just really see that this kid is missing that social interaction that we let off the meeting with today. So while our teachers and staff at GCISD are doing a wonderful job, just want to let you know that virtual learning was not intended, nor was it ever supposed to be intended for early childhood education. So I'll leave you with one final word. Comes from the first chapter of Joshua, verse 9. Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid. Do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you may go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Our next, our next speaker is Jennifer Simpler. Ms. Simpler, go ahead and step, I guess we'll step up to the microphone and state your name and address and proceed with your remarks.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be heard tonight. My name is Jennifer Simpler. I'm a Colleyville resident, former teacher, and mother of three kids, spanning from elementary to middle school. Our schools must open. Parents are now seeing what their child's school day looks like and therefore are raising even more concerns. The fate of all families in GISD rests in the hands of a small group of leaders, elected leaders, who need to hear our voice. My starting point, the coronavirus, cases in Tarrant County, as well as Texas, are dropping. Let's look at some factual numbers from the Tarrant County Health Department. 2.1 million people in Tarrant County with 505 deaths is a .02 percent. Not one person under the age of 18 has died. Only 6% of all cases are under the age of 15. Grapevine, 57,000 residents, with 626 cases, leave 99% of people unaffected. Colleyville, 27,000, with 241 cases, leaving over 99% unaffected. Simple math can conclude that the threat of death is, in fact, not a threat at all, especially to our students. Schools should be able to open with a minimal threat. My next point, virtual learning. This is not effective or sustainable for younger grades. This week, my child has spent only 1.5 hours per day with his teacher. These children are struggling to pay attention and grasp what's going on. I don't blame the teachers for this. I know they are doing the best they can. Unfortunately, they are at the mercy of your decisions. Photos posted all over social media show children of all ages limp and uninterested. Parents have discussed the tears and frustration associated by virtual learning. Open schools up. Let teachers and students have a chance to succeed. As we, the parents and teachers and citizens, voted in majority to open, why have you ignored this? Why has the elected board gone against the will of the majority? You have given a safe environment to those who want at-home learning while rendering the majority hostage under forced virtual learning. My final point, unethical treatment of families in GCISD. You are allowing teachers' kids to be taught at the school where they teach. You are using taxpayer money to facilitate their child's learning in a safe environment while under the supervision of an adult all day long. How is this fair? You're giving teachers the ability to work and have their child taken care of while you tell other families to figure it out. Families that can't go to work because they have to stay home with their child, or worse, must leave their child unattended all day to make ends meet. This is outrageous, unacceptable, and unethical in every way. We deserve better than this from you. We need our schools open. We need you to listen to our voices. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Simpler. Our next speaker is Amanda Kelso.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. I'm Amanda Kelso, and I live in Ulyss. I have, I'm speaking on behalf of my family. I have one middle schooler and two high schoolers. And while we appreciate all the hard work that the district and teachers have done for the online learning, it's just not sustainable for my family, and I just don't think my kids will be successful. My two high schoolers are doing okay, but my middle schooler is struggling. He's frustrated. They all want to go to school. They want to go back. So we're really looking forward to being So we're really looking forward to being able to go back hopefully and stay there. They really need to be in school, and they want to have a normal school day also. I don't know for sure what it's going to look like when they go back, but if they're stuck in one room all day and not being able to socialize at all, I don't think they will like that either. And then I just wanted to say that, you know, I kind of agree with the two previous speakers. We can't hide from a virus. There's going to be another virus after this. And I think it's, it's safe for the people that choose to go back. And hopefully, we won't go back and then be shut down again, because I think that will be a disaster for a lot of kids and cause them a lot of harm. That's all I had to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kelso. Our next speaker is Jody Millsap. Ms. Millsap? Ms. Millsap, are you there? Okay, let's go on to our next speaker, Abby Davis.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please go ahead and state your name and address and proceed with your remarks.
Hi, my name is Abby Davis. I live in Colleyville. I have two children in GCISD. I very much appreciate all the board members have done and are continuing to do for our community in this challenging time. We love our teachers and administrators. But today, I want to share a perspective of a portion of GCISD that I feel was left out of the conversation about reopening our schools last time. When the pandemic started and altered, essential employees continued to work. Some worked harder than ever before and all learned to adapt and overcome. Small adjustments and massive changes alike were made daily and on the fly, even by very large government bureaucracies. They were able to continue functioning to serve the public. Our doctors, nurses, trash collectors, grocery store employees, city employees, construction workers, postal workers, delivery drivers, law enforcement officers, all first responders, and everyone at DFW Airport rolled on this entire time. And now, these same people who have worked so hard are being told that our schools are not able to manage in-person education. These people who have had their own children in daycare all summer are now being told to figure it out on their own with virtual learning. Virtual learning may be okay for our high school kids temporarily. It is a joke to manage that for our younger ones as an essential employee. The reality of that is our children are at daycare and a lot of them are at home alone. And the speed of these changes back and forth has made the childcare plans for this group of people an additional layer of nightmare. Working parents, single parents, shift-working essential employees, and more are being put in the corner with these decisions, and it is wrong. I personally know several people that have completely withdrawn their young children from GCISD because managing seven hours of virtual learning, five WebEx's a day for small kids is 100% incompatible with their reality. These are all our kids, our GCISD kids that are being hurt by this. The seasonal flu is a much more deadly virus for our small kids than COVID-19 is. The adults should have the PPE situation figured out by now. Everyone else has done it. You know, if you guys need a certain percentage of our kids to stay virtual to ensure that schools are open and not delayed anymore, please just say that. Ask for help with PPE if you need it. We have a very resourceful community that is very invested in our youth, and they are eager to help. Please stay on track for a September 8th reopening. Our schools are essential. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker is Stephanie Thompson. Ms. Thompson, go ahead and once you're connected, state your full name and address and let us hear your remarks. Thank you.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Great. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. My name is Stephanie Thompson, and first of all, I just want to say a huge thank you to just all of our teachers. I know that this virtual learning is probably something that they never expected to have to be doing, and I think they're doing a fantastic job at it. I have four children in the Grapevine-Colleyville ISD. I have a daughter, my oldest, is a senior this year. And as you can imagine, a little bit heartbreaking to get to your senior year and have to start through virtual school. So that has definitely been a challenge for her. And then I have a sophomore, my son. He is, he struggled last, towards the end of the year with just trying to pass with his classes. And he's normally a straight A student, but just trying to, you know, navigate new waters of being responsible for work and WebEx logins just proved to be extremely difficult for him. I also have two children. My younger ones are in second grade and third grade, and they are at Grapevine Elementary, and they both have been diagnosed with dyslexia. So as a parent, it's just been extremely difficult to try to navigate those waters. They need their specials teachers. My daughter, who is in third grade this year, she made just huge, huge strides with the extra help that she was getting from her specials teachers. She also was able to do summer school last year, which helped her to just kind of catch up where she's already behind. And so I'm really frustrated with the fact that we did a parent survey to decide if we wanted our children to either have the option to do virtual learning or in-person, and then that choice was taken away from us. My kids need school desperately. They need to be in a classroom. They need the hands-on. They need to be in front of their teachers. And so I just really, really hope that the September 8th start date happens. I do feel that our teachers are essential workers, just like, you know, one of the previous callers had mentioned, is that everyone has had to adapt with the situation. And I just feel like there's been so many months for us to kind of, you know, get our stuff together so that our kids could go back to school. Both my husband and I work full-time jobs, and so trying to, you know, juggle and get childcare and, you know, the expense of that as well has also just been extremely difficult. So I really do hope that we continue with the in-person option to those of us that choose that, starting on the 8th of September.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Our next speaker is Julie Robertson. Ms. Robertson, please go ahead and start your remarks, but please remember to state your name and full address.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. So my name is Julie Robertson. I live in Colleyville, and I just have three main commas. The first is I've noticed there's quite a bit of construction in the district. Heritage Elementary School has porta-potties and a dumpster taking up half of the parking lot. When will the construction end? And what is the plan for when students start in-person with that construction? Second point, I love that our coaches and athletes are participating and practicing, doing drills right now. However, I think that sends a mixed message. Why is it safe for football players to run drills in the Mac building, but elementary school students cannot be in the classroom? Hopefully, this will be a moot point if schools open as planned. Third, I just want to thank all the board members for putting in so much time to represent our community. I know this is an unpaid position, and you're all working really hard, especially this year. I was surprised at the last board meeting that such an important issue regarding opening the schools was passed with just a motion and a second. I think this will be an ongoing issue as the year progresses, and it would be great if each of you would go on the record with a yea or nay regarding schools. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Our next speaker is Ms. Wendy Park. Ms. Park, go ahead and state your name and address and let us know what you're thinking. We could just barely hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry. My name is Wendy Park. I live on Apple Valley Road in Colleyville. I have three boys in elementary, middle, and high school. And I work, I'm one of those essential employees. I work in home healthcare, so I wear the full PPE all day long. It's not fun, but it's doable, and I've adapted to it. And I feel like our teachers should be provided with all the resources that they need. I'm not sure what the plan is and what they'll have access to, but I know as a community, we could rally big time and ensure that the ones that return feel comfortable and can deck themselves out head to toe so that they feel safe and protected with our kids. A friend told me that I have a bit of a unique perspective when it comes to returning to school because I don't expect a COVID-free environment. I feel like if we shouldn't panic within three days and shut down again if there's some positive cases going around. I feel I wish we could just sign a waiver and say if my kid walks through the door, there's a chance there's an exposure. Families have had plenty of time now to think about their decisions and plan accordingly based on if they have a compromised loved one they live with. I love the option of being able to stay remote, and that should continue for the duration. But the rest of us who are not in that boat just need to have continual access of in-person learning and not worry about the fact that we may open and five days later, we're going to close again. The gap, I feel like, will just widen between those who can afford private pod tutorings that are already going on now with multiple kids, I might add. But, I mean, two of my three kids are not doing well with the online learning. Don't get me wrong, I'm completely impressed with how much better it is compared to the spring. And these teachers are killing it for an online experience. But two of my kids just aren't thriving. I can't imagine that they're actually going to learn much. The one kid that actually enjoys it, he's a high schooler, and he has a welding class. So I don't see how that's ever going to work in a virtual environment. Let's see, I had another point. I'm not sure. I just know that the kids are struggling for this temporary. I really want this to be a temporary thing, and I really am praying that we don't just shut right back down. That's my biggest worry because back and forth is going to get it to nowhere. But I really applaud what the district's done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Our next speaker is Ms. Vanessa Steinkamp. Ms. Steinkamp, go ahead and state your name and address and...
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
We can. Vanessa, before you start, if I could please, for the rest of our speakers, according to our board policy, we really need you to state your full address, if you would please. Sorry, Vanessa.
Can you hear me, though? You can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. Camp, at 13 Ashford Court. I'm a proud parent and educator that lives in GCISD. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and recognize the quandary COVID has placed educators, parents, and administrators in. I want to thank all the teachers in our district for their tenacity, flexibility, and hard work. My family appreciates all you do. Thank the board and the administration for their hard work. It has not been overlooked, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. The discussion regarding opening schools has mostly been couched in terms of safety. Can schools be safely open during COVID? While that is a valuable discussion to have, it is also important to ask whether shutting... As an educator for over 20 years, I can simply say virtual learning is not a tenable long-term solution for COVID and children. We must have to return children to their classrooms and have the perseverance to keep them there. We cannot simply default to online learning in the future. The focal point should be optimizing in-person instruction safely. As we all know, schools provide safe havens, structure, stability, and consistency. Teachers often identify with users and also provide a support system for our youth. The students that reap and require the most benefits from school are often the same ones that struggle the most during this... Some students struggle to find quiet places to study, lack reliable internet, and some are required to provide care for younger siblings. It creates impossible situations for working parents, single parents, and indigent families. Shutting schools is injurious to the cognitive and emotional development of children, especially at younger ages, still noticeable at the upper levels as well. Schools facilitate much-needed socialization, collaboration, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills with both peers and teachers. Virtual learning reduces the ability for these skills to be honed, enhanced, and augmented. We have seen a precipitous increase in depression and other mental health issues in kids. While teachers are normally mandated reported for childhood risk factors, children and families are now left alone to deal with these issues. In April alone, there was a 1,000% increase in pediatric calls to the Department of Health and Human Services Disaster Help Hotline. Distance learning is inequitable. School closure... ...economic disparities. I worry incessantly about those under the age of 18. I see the most deleterious effects of school closures firsthand in even the most well-adjusted children. Kids are bearing the brunt of a policy that does not match their risk level. When I was a young educator, Dr. Rick DeFort, you may all know him due to his pioneer work in DLCs, impressed upon me that every action, every policy, every step we take, paid attention to afford success for every student. All children deserve a quality education during COVID. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Steinkamp. Our next speaker is Russell Roberts.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Russell Roberts, and I am a resident of Colleyville on 2914 Scarborough Lane West, with three kids in school and one more coming next year. I want to comment to my support for the district to not only open on September 8th, but also to remain open for those who have chosen in-person education. I say this for two reasons. One, due to COVID, I fear there can always be reasons to close schools or classrooms after a student becomes lab-confirmed positive for COVID-19. And two, as a taxpayer, I believe we need to keep schools open for many reasons, but I specifically want to address the issue of taxes. I believe the taxes we pay are meant to cover the cost of in-person education, or at least the option of in-person education. While there is tremendous support and benefits in person education, the tax implications of remote-only education would be a relevant discussion topic. Very simply, taxes should be reduced if the switch was made for any reason to remote-only education. A recent New York Times article states the following about college tuition, and I quote, "Incised at paying face-to-face prices for education increasingly online, students and their parents are demanding tuition rebates, increased financial aid, reduced fees, and leaves of absences to compensate for what they feel will be a diminished college experience." Who wants to pay $25,000 a year for glorified Skype, cited a source. Education just isn't information, said another. And further, some families have sued. A class action attorney in South Carolina said his firm alone has filed at least 30 lawsuits charging universities with a breach of contract for switching in-person instruction to online classes. Now, I understand private colleges are different from public schools, but public sentiment will be very similar in remote-only environments. I also expect the district likely increased expenses to better prepare our students for online and for safety protocols for in-person education. However, if we find ourselves in a remote-only situation, there will be calls to reduce the cost of our school system, as there should be. That is the natural economic response to remote-only education, with some but not all costs shifting to parents. Furthermore, the board should take appropriate fiscal measures to reduce operating expenses in a remote-only environment. I conclude with a final appeal to this board to be courageous, innovative, and accommodating to maintain options for parents and taxpayers for classrooms to remain open. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Our next speaker is Jackie Oly.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Oly. I live at 3303 St. Almond Circle in Colleyville. I'm a proud and busy parent of four children who attend three of GCISD's campuses, and I'm also a GCSD and community volunteer. I am so thankful that our school district and school board has allowed parents to have the choice for virtual or in-person education because I believe that it is imperative that we get them back into in-person learning as soon as possible and keep it consistent. For the past five months or more, parents have made decisions about everything that concerns their children during these uncertain times. In fact, parents have been trusted to make these decisions about their children's health and well-being their entire lives. Let's continue to trust them now to make the right decision about where to send their kids to school, whether it be a pandemic pod, charter school, public school of their choice, or private school. Parents know best. They deserve a choice. Science is so clear that the risk of death or hospitalization for children with this virus is so, so low. But we know that the risks of missing school are catastrophic. In fact, the latest American Academy of Pediatrics advice states that children learn best when they are in school. This is the same American Academy of Pediatrics that told us when our children were young... and today that no more than two hours per day of screen time is recommended for children. And I don't know a single parent today who thinks their child needs more screen time. I am quoting now from the latest article from the AAP dated June 25, 2020, entitled, "COVID-19 Planning Considerations: Guidance for School Reentry." Quote, "Schools are fundamental to child and adolescent development and well-being and provide our children and adolescents with academic instruction, social and emotional skills, safety, reliable nutrition, physical speech, and mental health therapy, and opportunities for physical activity, among other benefits. Beyond supporting the educational development of children and adolescents, schools play a critical role in addressing racial and social inequality," end quote. It further states, quote, "The AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. The importance of in-person learning is well documented. There is already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring of 2020. Lengthy time away from school and associated interruption of supportive services often results in social isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits, as well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance-affused depression, and suicidal ideation," end quote. Therefore, if a parent feels confident and feels safe sending their child or children to school, fully acknowledging all of the risks, then they should have the choice because public education is their right and consistency is key. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Oly. Our next speaker is Sarah Hill. Dr. Hill, go ahead and start your remarks and let us know your address.
Okay, great. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Sarah Hill. I live at 1,000 Woodvale Court in Colleyville, and I have two kids in GCISD. I want to start just by saying thank you all for your efforts to serve our children during this really difficult time. In addition to being a parent in GCISD, I'm also a psychology professor at TCU, and I'm a researcher who studies stress, mental health, and the lasting effects of early-life poverty. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all as you consider the decisions to keep schools open for in-person education, and of course, to keep with the September 8th start date. This country, as you all know, was founded on the idea that through the availability of public education, everyone, regardless of the circumstances into which they were born, would be given the tools that they need to succeed. I hold these ideals dear to my heart, and I'm guessing that many of you do, too. And they're meaningful. As someone who works in higher education, I get to see every day the incredible power that education has in providing people with the tools necessary to transcend socioeconomic and class boundaries. I've seen students who've grown up very poor in circumstances where there was abuse or addiction, and I've seen these students go on to earn advanced degrees in some of the finest institutions in our nation. Quite simply, education works, but not all education is equal. Virtual education makes the ability of a child to learn effectively almost completely dependent on their parents' ability to provide for their children a suitable learning environment, working technology, daytime supervision, and assistance with schoolwork. This is simply not possible for many of the families in our district, and the impact of this sort is set up asymmetrically, is shouldered by children from disadvantaged environments. There's little doubt in my schools closed or closing if there's even a minor outbreak in infection. This will simply reinforce existing class structures and cause the existing disparities between the haves and have-nots to widen. And this is a tragedy for these children. It's a tragedy for our community, and it's a tragedy for Texas. A healthy economy and political stability depend on an educated populace, and our district's poorest children aren't being educated right now. And it's not just our poorest in our community who lose in an online environment. All of our children lose. The social isolating effects of distance learning are detrimental to our children's mental health. Research has long found that social isolation and loneliness are predictive of diminished motivation, withdrawal, depression, suicidal ideation, and addiction. And there's now a growing body of evidence that finds that these outcomes are increasing at a rapid-fire pace in face of school closures and quarantine measures. Our children are suffering, and their mental health is being harmed. I understand that this is a complex issue, but I do ask that you consider all of these issues as you make your decisions moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hill. Our next speaker is Shannon Solinsky.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Awesome. My name is Shannon Solinsky. I live on Creekview in Grapevine. My daughter attends Glen Hope Elementary, where our Gator teachers and staff totally rock. Thanks for the opportunity for me to speak tonight. Endgame. I'd like to address this leadership board, just ask simply, what is our endgame with coronavirus? How many cases are too many? The more we test, the more positive cases we'll likely have until the virus runs its course or there is a vaccine. It's that simple. Not to mention that we can't ensure that the positive tests are truly positive. I'm sure you've seen the recent news stories about Governor Abbott investigating the sharp increase in positive test results. I quote from the Star Telegram last week. "Over the past week and a half, the state began reporting coronavirus data from a backlog of 500,000 viral tests that officials say accumulated because of coding errors by Quest, Walgreens, and Kristus Health," all private entities that process the tests. "The test result has been an ongoing miscalculation of the positivity rate, the rate at which people test positive for the virus. If the positivity rate is our measuring stick, we have already failed our children. Positive cases is not a realistic metric. Our community is back to work, back to the museums, back to the water parks, back to the friendly skies, the skating rink, and more. We can go to the grocery store, the furniture store, the gym, the movies, and the liquor store, but our children cannot go to school. Does anyone realize how ludicrous this sounds? And then what happens when we have our first inevitable case? Because it's coming. Do we run back to our closets? Is that what our doctors and nurses did? Is that what our airline employees and law enforcement officers did? Is that what our grocery clerks did? My daughter has been back to gymnastics since early May, and they've had one case. They closed momentarily, they did a deep clean, and they kept on trucking. We know so much more than we did in March. We know who's at risk. We know what to do if we think we've been exposed. We know how to protect ourselves. The GCISD leadership has given a choice for the parents who elect to have their child stay home. I applaud you for that, but I also implore you to stop dragging the rest of the parents and the children to virtual school when it is not our choice. Virtual school is not sustainable for most children. We're supposed to teach and model critical thinking to our children. Countless science fiction books and movies have told adventure stories about space. For a while, it was only fiction, but technology has changed that, and dreamers like Elon Musk. If we can now reuse rocket boosters and build equipment that autonomously docks with the International Space Station, if we can do these remarkable historic things, I assure you, we can open our schools safely during a health pandemic. Thank you for your hard work and for your time tonight."
All right, thank you, Ms. Solinsky. Our next speaker is Mr. Ronald Drummond. Mr. Drummond, go ahead. Oh, okay, well, please, you can't mind him. We'll try again at the end. Next one is Kamala Perez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Kamala Perez. I live at 4316 Pembroke Parkway North, and I want to thank you for actually volunteering your time to listen to us. And I know you're spending more hours than just listening to us. You're spending countless hours making decisions and talking about other items besides the coronavirus. I am a healthcare worker. I'm a hygienist. I have worked through the whole pandemic, minus the seven weeks that the governor shut us down. We did, my daughter was in, at Timberline for their dual Spanish, and we pulled her from the school district and put her in private for her middle school years. And we decided to pull her back out and put her in public schools so that she could get acclimated to what real world feels like. And this doesn't feel like real world for any of us. And I can tell you, we did the remote learning for the last quarter of our school, and actually, it was a joke. She didn't learn a lot. She cheated a lot. These kids are smart. They can cheat their way through all kinds of things with these computers and remote learning. It just gives them the opportunity to do it. I'm fortunate, I only have one now at the house. My other two have already graduated from Colleyville Heritage and graduated, they're through college already. But this one, if we end up continuing to do remote learning, I will pull her and put her in private school. This is not living, and we're not teaching our children to do much besides hide in a house and be scared. I'm not scared, and I'm in people's faces. This is a really weak virus. It doesn't live on countertops. It doesn't live in here. You can kill it with vitamin C and heat. Hepatitis is way stronger. It can live on countertops. You should be scared of hepatitis. And we're going to continue to get positive results as long as we keep testing. And personally, I think there's a money trail somewhere, but I really hope you guys open up the schools. Not so much for mine. I mean, mine will be fine. I can pull mine. But there's a lot of parents that aren't speaking, that don't have the courage to get up and speak to you guys because they're scared, that don't have the resources, and those kids are going to be struggling. Thank you, guys, for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Perez. Our next speaker is Ms. Casey Tisher. Ms. Tisher, go ahead and state your name and address and let us know what you're thinking.
Having issues unmuting Ms. Tisher right now. Oh, there it is. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Okay. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. My name is Casey Tisher. I live at 6813 Pleasant Run Road. I have three kids in the district. I want to say thank you to all of our wonderful teachers and staff. They have been phenomenal. They've always been phenomenal. That's why we love our district. I just think that it's so important that our kids are going back to school. As an educator, I know that this is making a huge gap, especially with those who face, you know, socioeconomic difficulties. My son is in special education. He is really struggling. He's expected to be on four WebExes a day, and that's not counting his OT, his speech. And I just truly believe he needs those services. I love athletics. I love sport. All my kids play sports, and I truly believe we're sending a mixed message, allowing those students to meet, but then not allowing our special education students to receive their services. And the parents were surveyed. We all spoke. We want to be back in school. Our kids want to be back in school. The teachers want to be back in school, and I think it is your job to represent us, represent the taxpayers, represent the teachers, and allow us to go back. So, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tisher. Our next speaker is Ms. Samantha Zelling. All right, Ms. Zelling, I think you're on now.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Hello again. My name is Samantha Zelling, and I am a current junior at Colleyville Heritage. My address is 3309 Burning Long Drive in Grapevine. I wanted to talk about the textbook pickup event that took place last week at CHHS. I am still in disbelief about what I encountered. All three times I drove up to try to get my textbooks during the time scheduled for juniors and seniors, the conditions were unsafe and made me uncomfortable. The lines were long. Several students did not wear masks, and the six feet of social distancing was definitely not maintained. Each of the two subsequent times I drove back, nothing had changed. The line didn't move. Some of my friends who got there an hour before the event even started actually made it inside of the building, sent me videos which showed chaos and disorganization inside. It was a blazing hot day. The lines didn't move. People were stuck in the sun for two and more hours. So I decided, after my last attempt, that it was futile and dangerous to get the textbooks that day. I honestly would not be surprised if this area saw a spike in COVID-19 cases two weeks from now. It was that bad. My questions for the board are, one, simple math illustrates that roughly 1,000 students in a two-hour window is impractical at best and terribly unsafe during a pandemic at worst. Why was this event not done in a drive-through manner as neighboring districts Birdville and HEB were? Many different methods could have been utilized, such as having students schedule a time slot or dividing time slots by the first letter of their name. I can't think of a worse way of holding this event than the way it actually played out on Friday. Two, Governor Abbott's July 2nd executive order stipulates that, quote, "For any outdoor gathering in excess of 10 people, the gathering is prohibited unless the mayor of the city or the county judge approves it." Was this event even approved? This seems to have violated our governor's order. Three, the email sent to parents said that masks and social distancing would both be followed. Why were neither followed? This reminds me of the district's own guidelines for my sister's graduation in June that weren't followed either. GCISD now has a poor track record of how it has conducted itself during this pandemic. And finally, four, is GCISD truly prepared to reopen in two weeks? Judging by the way textbook pickup was conducted on Friday, I say a resounding no. We will never be past this pandemic if our communities and leaders don't start taking it seriously and following health protocols. If you keep handling school events and matters in such a lax manner, more illness and death will most certainly result. And maybe it's not the kids, but it will be the parents of the kids. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zelling. Our next speaker is Sarah Kozlowski. Ms. Kozlowski.
Yes. Yes, my name is Sarah Kozlowski. I am at 5409 Kevin Tree Court in Colleyville. I am here representing my kindergartner, who is at Colleyville Elementary, as well as the majority of students whose parents elected for them to be able to have an in-person option. I could sit here and list out the epidemiologic and scientific rationale for returning to in-person schooling as quickly as possible, but I won't because I did that last time, and you didn't listen. Just as you didn't listen to the majority of GCISD parents who selected an in-person option, as referenced by your own stated numbers published after the last meeting and district communication since. In fact, the numbers who selected in-person option at Colleyville Elementary School were in excess of 70% of parents who elected that option and yet were denied. As an elected representative, your sole duty is to uphold the will of your constituents, not your own agenda. If you cannot or will not fulfill that obligation, you are not fit to represent the school district. You stand for one. You do not stand for one. You stand for all. I understand and value the need to prioritize the health and safety of both teachers and students. However, I am greatly concerned when people seem to toss around the ability to regain lost academic ground like it's a simple task. School is not childcare. It is an essential service that is critical for our children and our communities. It shapes the social, emotional, and academic abilities of a generation. We need to offer more than staying at home and parking our kids in front of screens. We owe that to them. And in that light, I would echo everything that Mrs. Steinkamp and Dr. Hill reiterated to you, coming from within your own school district and coming from an expert in this very area. I would love to hear how you would plan to address the widening disparity gap that this is creating when creating chasms between the haves and the have-nots. I personally know almost a dozen families who have now withdrawn their children from Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District and placed them in private schools in the area. That is not an option that is feasible for most families in this area. And quite honestly, they shouldn't be driven to be forced into that choice. We moved into this area, almost all of us, because of the school district. We elected our officials to represent us to be able to ensure that our children got the best academic education that... got the best academic education that was allotted to them. They are being denied that because you went against the will of the parents. All I ask is that you now do what the parents are requesting, which is to provide an in-person option. The majority of parents and teachers alike requested that there be an in-person option. This takes nothing from the parents or the families who wish to continue on with a virtual option. It is their right and absolutely their choice to be able to do that. However, that is neither the choice nor the possibility for so many in the, in the district. And I beg you and urge you to please consider that as we move forward toward the September eighth re-institution of in-person schooling.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kozlowski. Our next speaker is, uh, Mike Sexton. Mr. Sexton, go ahead and, uh, state your name and address and, uh, let us hear your remarks. All right, we're not finding, not finding Mr. Sexton right now. Okay, uh, next speaker is Angela Meyerhofer. Uh, Ms. Meyerhofer. She's not online right now, okay? Uh, next speaker, Ms. Cassandra Fogel. Or Ms. Fogel, go ahead and state your name and address and, and your remarks.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Fogel. I live on Quills Path in Colleyville. I just want to say thank you guys for your time tonight. I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to speak. Um, I'm here to express my wholehearted hope that the school board proceeds with the proposal of allowing the students to return to in-person schooling as planned on September eighth and to remain open. Those of us who have selected that option have already weighed the pros and cons of that decision and are ready to move forward with the plan. My children are elementary age, only six days into the remote learning, and we are already experiencing emotional, technological, and time management frustrations that are detrimental to our kids. I believe all of us, parents, teachers, administrators, and students, went into this with the expectation, or at least the hope, that we could create a remote learning environment that closely resembled the classroom. Our family has come to the realization that creating a classroom at home is not something we can accomplish. Don't get me wrong, despite the many technical difficulties that we've had, my children are grasping new concepts and they are completing work that is assigned to them. However, I believe the public school elementary setting is also designed to expose young children to the responsibility and respectful social interactions. There are so many other important coming-of-age experiences that the kids are missing, being at home for the past six months. From looking at someone in the eye when they are speaking to you, to walking quietly in the hall or making friends on the playground, even competing in activities during PE or singing in school performances. All of these are important emotional milestones that our children are missing. Do I think that my children can get a quality education from this remote learning experience? No. I think they will grow intellectually and expand on some educational concepts, but I think they are missing out on some of the other very important building blocks of life. Some of these children will be leaders in our community in the future. Those who aren't will, at the very least, be expected to function in society. The expectation that a ten-year-old fifth grader, whose emotional maturity regarding school is trapped in pre-spring break fourth grade with teachers telling him it is time to start the math lesson or that he needs to line up to walk to PE, having the expectation that that ten-year-old child is now capable of setting calendar reminders on Chromebooks for seven WebEx meetings is unfair. Our family has two working parents. We are beyond thankful that both of us have been able to work from home during this time. If we weren't, then my list of points to support returning to school as soon as possible would be much longer. I can't imagine that the unnecessary, the unnecessary stress that would be created if both of us were not at home to provide the technological and time management support that they need. I'd just like to close saying, I think my daughter's third-grade teacher summed it up best when she said, told the kids that this is their only opportunity to be in third grade and it's up to them to make the most of it. So please allow her that opportunity. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fogel. Our next speaker is Mr. James Ritchie.
Uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, just barely. Mr. Ritchie?
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Excellent, okay. Appreciate it. This is James Ritchie. I live at sixty-seven thirteen Sapphire Circle North in Colleyville. I have three children, two at Colleyville Elementary and one in daycare. Uh, first, thanks for allowing me a chance to speak tonight. Um, I'll say we're, we're thankful for GCISD. Uh, we're proud to be in this district. And I chose to speak tonight because I didn't realize the importance of voicing our opinion at the previous board meeting. I want to ensure the board knows there are many parents out there that feel extremely important that we get our kids back in school on September eighth. Fortunately, my kids are in a great situation. My wife and I both work from home. Uh, both our employers have been very understanding with the known distractions and stress of being parents, teachers, and employees all at the same time. We also know at some point that flexibility will end. Although this round of virtual learning is more effective than last spring, our kids still struggle. Uh, they don't get the attention and hands-on learning they need. Their emotional needs aren't being met through an iPad and they lack interaction with their peers and building relationships in a classroom. Uh, it's already evident that the excitement of learning from an iPad is waning after just six days of virtual learning and this is clearly not sustainable. As I said, my family is fortunate. Uh, but there are many kids in our district whose parents are unable to work from home and are unable to do virtual learning in a consistent environment. There are kids who have special needs and require one-to-one attention. Uh, and kids are in situations that leave them vulnerable, hungry, and scared. School is an escape for many kids and those are the kids who are likely falling behind right now and they'll never catch up. And I know we're up against a virus we don't fully understand at this point, uh, but we do know a few things about keeping schools closed. Extended closures can be harmful to children's mental health. An environment where students feel safe and connected, such as school, is associated with lower levels of depression, thoughts about suicide and social anxiety. Extended school closures deprive children who live in unsafe homes and neighborhoods of an important layer of protection from neglect as well as physical and emotional abuse. Uh, this isn't a concern for, this is not a concern for all families, but one child is too many when it could have been avoided. And the best available evidence from countries that have opened schools indicates that COVID- nineteen poses low risk to school-aged children and suggests that children are unlikely to be major drivers of the spread of this virus. Reopening schools creates opportunity to invest in education, well-being, and future, and the future of one of America's greatest assets, our children, while taking every precaution to protect students, teachers, staff, and their families. To wrap it up, I hope we continue with our plan to open schools on September eighth for the many students and teachers who want to go back. Thanks for taking my comments and for all you do to support our children. Bye.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Our next speaker is Andrea Chavez. All right, Ms. Chavez, you should be online now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my name is Andrea Chavez. I live at three oh-eight West Mill Valley Drive in Colleyville. I'm a parent of a child in GCISD. To quote the words of Spock from The Wrath of Khan, "The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few." That is wise in any case. That is where I involve and invoke logic. Now, this may sound like an unusual quote from a sci-fi movie from the eighties. However, um, it's a serious situation that we're going through and I understand that this is a global pandemic, but there is a new dawn that scares me even more than the pandemic, that is unintended consequences of our children and their future not being in the classroom at school. The alternative is a huge kickback from parents who work and cannot sustain an online culture for learning for much longer. Um, I understand that Greg Abbott, backed by numerous pediatricians, say that the best learning environment for children is to be in the classroom room. And we understand this is a difficult time for some. However, teachers and students willing and able to be in the classroom need to be protected in that decision to go in person, to go back to learning from that and be prevented from shutting down the schools again. Um, I heard countless people earlier talking about the numbers of COVID cases in Texas decreasing um, and the fact that hospitalizations are going down and that we are doing better since, in, um, the mask enforcement um, and getting more involved with public, um, venturing out and things. Um, as long as the, the schools or, or the hospitals, um, still have capacity and are going down in these kinds of cases, support the reasons why I think it's okay for in-person learning. Um, and I believe that the children going back to school, um, that is a greater benefit than the risks of, um, of the, of the COVID. Now, every day, the excitement of my child, um, goes down each day um, and it dwindles as he realizes that he cannot be with his class and he's learning at home. My husband and I work and although we are very grateful and, and our work has been flexible, we cannot produce, we cannot be as productive as our full focus we'd like to be, nor are we better teachers than our own teachers. Kids need to get back and to stay back at school. I want to thank everyone for their time today, um, on the board. I know you're going above and beyond and for all the teachers that are also, um, above and beyond right now. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chavez. Our next speaker is Kathleen Thompson. Uh, Ms. Thompson? You should be on now.
I'm here, thank you. I'm Kathleen Thompson, representing myself and my awesome family. We live at thirty-three seventeen Burning Log Drive, Grapevine. A few weeks ago, I asked the district's trustees and superintendent to let science and data lead us. I asked y'all to listen to common sense, doctors, and experts. Last week, I drove my eldest son, my sophomore, to school for textbook pickup and the line of students extended from the front of the building down the school sidewalk into the city street. Students were not spaced and not all students were masked. We turned around and came home. The next day, we drove to school to get a teacher to sign off on his community service hours for the ambassador program and the same scene from Thursday was repeated. I watched graduation this spring to cheer for the seniors in our life. I didn't see all students observing GCISD's own instructions, nor did I see any students and, nor did I see any adults enforcing them. Last week, I didn't see all students observing GCISD's own instructions and again, I didn't see any adults enforcing them. I understand from friends that some students waited in line for hours and I saw students, myself, standing side by side and the photos shared on social media in recent days show the same. Our students, educators, and our community deserve better than this. Our local grocery stores have figured out distribution and people management. Can GCISD bring on a grocery store manager to help? I don't say this flippantly because HEB grocery stores mobilized pandemic plans in January twenty-twenty, long before our Texas state government did. Please, let's use all resources possible to keep people safe. Scientists and doctors are learning each day about the novel coronavirus and Texas alone, more than eleven thousand have died. COVID- nineteen is making some younger and healthy people debilitatingly sick for months. What some people have said tonight during this meeting is not true. Whether they are misinformed or lying, only God knows. There has been a ninety percent increase in the number of COVID cases among children in the United States over the last four weeks, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association. More than ninety American children have died per the American Academy of Pediatrics. Community spread in Tarrant County remains substantial. In-person gatherings this spring and last week don't give me confidence for reopening in two weeks. What changes will be made to enforce your own guidelines between now and then? If you don't have an answer, please get to work because lives depend on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Our next speaker is Rhonda Foster. Ms. Foster?
Hi, Rhonda Foster. Um, I live at one hundred Sycamore, Grapevine, Texas. I'm gonna take my.
Lots of feedback if you have a, another device on it, recommend turning it.
After what I do, I have my voice back in my hair, my ear. Okay. So I'm call, I'm calling and wanting to talk because I am looking forward to in-person learning on September ninth. Thank you all for the steps you have taken to improve our online resources. The teachers are working extremely hard and have many, have their own kids to juggle as well. I know a lot of families have a lot of complications, a lot of kids. Um, last time I spoke at the meeting, my stance was from a working mother of three young kids. The board asks for grace from the parents and the concerned members of the school district. At that point, we had sample schedules. It was evident there would be schedule conflicts with students, but my unanswered question remains now my everyday reality. My second-grade twins are in a pod of eight total kids. Three different GCISD schools, four different teachers, four different schedules, all second grade. They start school at different times, eat lunch at different times, have WebEx meetings at different times. Some have longer recess. Others, like my kids involved in dual language, get fifteen minutes to play after lunch and then they listen to their friends play outside while they work. My pre-K child is expected to sit for two forty-five minutes of the WebEx sessions. There was no uniform schedule to keep kids and parents and help them be successful. I realize each teacher will have their own approach, but a similar framework of a schedule would help all parties involved. I do look forward to this being a short problem for my family personally, because I do look forward to online, uh, classes to be done and in-person classes to happen in September. But the framework, it has inherent problems with WebEx and everything that has been done.
All right, thank you, Ms. Foster. Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson. Jessica's not currently online, we're checking with her. Our next speaker is Regina Lucero.
Hi, my name is Regina Lucero. My address is two-four-zero-five Brittany Lane and I have three children in the district, elementary, middle, and high school. I am very grateful to the GCISD school district, the community, and specifically the teachers for their diligent work to prepare, prepare to provide the best in-person and remote learning options for the students. I ask the board that you continue to do all that you can to support our teachers throughout this stressful time. I was originally going to speak about just our children, but anyone that knows me knows that I have a heart for teachers as well and I'm concerned for everyone's well-being. I am very thankful that we all have a choice to go back to school or to stay home. I am thankful because the isolation of being home for the past six months has taken a toll on my children. I have watched my very social child change. He has become a bit timid to have conversations with peers and has anxiety even going out. I know getting back to school will help ease him back into these once very normal activities. When a child suffers from anxiety, the smallest things can be complex to them. We go through every step of what the day will look like for him and I know others who do the same. Last week, a few of my friends' children panicked when they couldn't get on a WebEx or their wifi, wifi went out. And many tears have been shed by students and teachers. Virtual schooling is not the best option for these students. Again, I am thankful everyone will be given the chance to go back to school in person September eighth. I want to thank the counselors that spoke tonight. I appreciate you and that information. I appreciate the board. I know we all want the very best for our community and I thank you for doing all that you can to keep our students and staff safe in school. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lucero. Uh, let's loop back now, um, to Ms. Jody Millsap. All right, Ms. Millsap, I think you're on.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can just barely hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay. My name is Jody Millsap. I live at 906 Hardage Lane in Colleyville. I have three children. Two are currently in GCISD, one at Colleyville Middle School and one at Colleyville Heritage. My nine-year-old daughter, we have moved to a private school because her emotional needs weren't being met through the district. I would like to discuss what our pediatrician recommended for the school district. His name is Dr. Robert. He is with Grapevine Pediatrics. He's been there for 25 years. And he said that his vote would be for our children to return to school tomorrow because COVID doesn't affect pediatrics. And he also said that this virus is in our population. It's not going to go away. He said that we need to treat it like the chickenpox, that we need to get these children together and expose them so that we can reduce the long-term infection rate. He also said that, just like the chickenpox, that we want our kids to be exposed now for herd immunity. We don't want them to get COVID when they're adults, just like we don't want them to get the shingles. And he also said that those with health concerns should have the opportunity to do virtual, just like those who are healthy should have the option of in-person learning. Like I said, I still have two children in the district. The one at the middle school is also dyslexic and he's not having his needs met. And it's very difficult to be able to, I'm working, my husband works out of the home. We are not here at the house during the day. So it's been a very difficult time. I do not believe that my children are receiving a free, appropriate public education as the law promises us. And so I just implore you to open the schools on September the 8th and provide for our children because they deserve it and they need it. And most of them are suffering in some form or another. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Millsap. Our next speaker is Angela Meyerhofer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Okay, I, my name is Angela Meyerhofer and I live at 6001 Quality Hill Road in Colleyville. I have six children, all boys, one who is too young to attend school, but the rest are in district, getting fourth graders in elementary, a sixth grader at Colleyville Middle and a freshman and junior at Grapevine High School. So it is a loud, rambunctious house with six boys. And whenever I get the emails about, you know, please not have your children eating during WebExes. Please, you know, and this is going out to mass people, so no, they're not targeting me. But please, you know, do have your, you know, your space a distraction-free learning environment. I mean, it's almost laughable to me because I have a four-year-old running around and five children on the internet typically at the same time off and on. I cannot, you know, create the best learning environment. My kids' education is suffering, mental health is suffering. And also getting emails from administrators stating that we cannot, we are encouraged not to sit with our elementary-aged children as they perform their WebEx meetings. If I don't sit with my second grader, then he's not listening. He is running around, making noise and playing with the four-year-old. So I just want to reiterate what many others have said, that if we do not start school in September, that our kids will suffer. I am debating on, you know, pulling at least two, maybe more kids out of the district to homeschool them so that I at least have some support. I do know you guys are working hard and I commend everyone throughout the district, especially our hard-working teachers. It's just not at all what we ever pictured doing, and it's just too difficult. Our kids' education is just not what it should be. But like I said, I appreciate everything you're doing and I just want you to consider everything of our, you know, the parents throughout the district are saying because our kids really, really need to be in school. Thank you guys for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Meyerhofer. Kelly, we have any other speakers on that we missed? Okay, all right, then that will conclude our speakers for tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Doug, for handling that. And thank you to our speakers, and we will move on to our public hearing, which is to discuss the adoption of the 2020 tax rate. But we can't hear you though. You can't hear me? You really, you really gotta put your mouth on top of it. Okay, can you hear me now? There we go. Okay, tonight, we are holding a public hearing on the 2020 tax rate adoption that will be later in the evening. The first slide, I just want to go through the tax rate breakdown. This is a reminder to you guys that the 2020 total proposed tax rate is $1.30.31. Now, the tax collections from this total tax rate are deposited into two different buckets. So we have our maintenance and operation bucket. That's 96.64 cents of that total tax rate. And that money is used to pay for payroll, utilities. We also pay our recapture payment, Robin Hood payments to the state and other daily operating costs. The other bucket of money is our debt service money, and that's 33.67 cents. And that is used to pay for voter-approved bonds. Now, House Bill 3 had a major impact on the tax laws and compression of the tax rate. So the 2020 total MNO tax rate will be compressed from 97 cents to 96.64 cents. So this is a .36 cent reduction in the total tax rate. Now, this total tax, MNO tax rate is broken up into two different tiers. We have our tier one tax rate that will be compressed from 93 cents to 91.64 cents. So that is a 1.36 cent reduction. This is the compression that comes from House Bill 3. It is calculated by the Texas Education Agency, so there is no local control over this tax rate. The way the TEA calculated it is looking at the July 25 certified property values. So they compared the July property values from 2019 to 2020. And based on that, 3.3% increase is how they calculated that compressed tax rate of 91.64 cents. The first year of the biennium, so in 2019, this tier one tax rate was compressed from 98 cents to 93 cents. So in two years, this has reduced from 98 cents to the 91.64 cents. The other piece of the MNO tax rate is the tier two tax rate. This is proposed to increase from four cents to five cents. So that would be a one cent increase. These are our golden pennies. So these, that means that they are not subject to recapture or Robin Hood, and we keep 100% of those pennies, tax collections within the district. I want to say that this tier two tax rate prior to House Bill 3, that tier two tax rate was six pennies. So even at a five-cent tax rate, it is below the tier two tax rate prior to House Bill 3. And that tier two tax rate was the same since the last major tax overhaul, which was in 2005. So that, if you, you remember, our total MNO tax rate was $1.4. That was really the maximum set by the state. And that included six golden pennies, and that tax rate did not, did not change. Now, it's important when we talk about the tax rate to have a discussion about the formula transition grant. And I know we've talked about these, this several times in our budget workshops. But this is that funding that guarantees that GCISD will receive at least a 3% increase in per ADA funding with House Bill 3 than received under the old law. So basically, this is a hold harmless funding that is set to expire in the 2024, 2025 school year. And I, I bring up the formula transition grants because it is important to understand how that works in relation to the tier two MNO tax rate. And so taking that hold harmless funding in consideration to help us make a recommendation tonight on that tier two tax rate. So as I mentioned, these are the golden pennies. We will be increasing from four pennies to five pennies. And the consideration in doing that is that it guarantees that that local tax revenue of approximately 1.6 million in future years, when that formula transition grant is set to expire. This is a decision we're making now that will benefit us in the future years. And it also allows more local tax revenue to stay within the district. So this slide gives us the chart, and I've broken down the two tiers in the MNO tax rate and along with the debt service tax rate. So the 2020 tax rate is what is being proposed, is being recommended tonight. And you can see it, 2019, our total tax rate was 1.3267, and the recommended rate for 2020 is 1.3031. So this is a 2.36 decrease in the overall tax rate. Now, it's made up of the tier one tax compression. It's the increase in the tier two tax rate of one penny and then a decrease in the debt service tax rate of two pennies. So the impact that has on the taxpayer is in the chart down below. And what I have provided is the taxes for the 2020 average home value. So that amount is 382,545. So I calculated that using last year's tax rate. So if we were to make no change in the tax rate, the annual taxes would be 5,075 on that average home value. But with the reduced tax rate for 2020, the annual taxes will be 4,985. So the 2022 taxes will be $90 less due to the reduction in the tax rate. This just gives us a breakdown of the total taxes for that average home value, so the 4,985. It's broken out by the maintenance and operation tax. So of that 4,985, 2,479 will go to the district to be used for our daily operating costs, which includes payroll. 1,217 of that 4,985 will be sent to the state for our Robin Hood payment. And so to point out that almost 33% of our total MNO tax collections are sent to the state. And then 1,289 of that 4,985 goes to help pay for voter-approved bonds. And the great thing about that is 100% of those tax collections stay in the community. Let's talk a little bit about the debt service tax rate. GCISD receives no state funding for facilities. So that is why our bond programs are so important to us as a recapture district. GCISD keeps 100% of these funds in the community, and they are used to pay for those voter-approved bonds. This slide just is a, gives us what our bond ratings are, and this is something that I'm really proud of. We've worked hard for these bond ratings and the, and the board has made decisions on our bond transactions that has helped us achieve these bond ratings. So Standard and Poor's, we received a bond rating upgrade in September of 2019. This is the highest S&amp;P rating that's offered to Texas school districts. We are one of only 23 Texas school districts to have that AA+ bond rating. And for Moody's, we got a bond rating upgrade in July of 2017, which was after we had implemented the 2016 bond program. So I talk about the bond ratings because it's helped us really implement that 2016 bond program that was approved by our voters in May of 2016. So that was 248.975 million. We sold the first portion in August of 2016, shortly after the election, and we received a true interest rate of 2.8%. Thinking we could never do better than that, three years later, we sold the remaining amount of bonds with a true interest rate of 2.72%. And so those bond ratings and our financial management overall really helped us get those really great interest rates. So it allowed us to implement the 2016 bond program at 85.8 million in interest below the cost originally communicated to voters in 2016. And with the proposed tax rate tonight for debt service of 33.67 cents, this was actually 7.15 cents less than the tax rate of 40.82 that was originally communicated to our voters in 2016. So our voters approved the bond program thinking their tax rate would be 40.82 cents. And now that we have sold the remaining amount of the bonds, that tax rate is actually 33.67 cents. And this slide just gives us a snapshot of what we have done over the last few years in really trying to help save interest costs and that, which is allowing us to make, have some flexibility with the debt service tax rate tonight. Just from savings from refunding programs and prepayment of bonds, we've saved 91.9 million in interest cost. Those are interest costs that taxpayers will not have to pay because of those transactions. So when we were determining the recommendation for the 2020 debt service tax rate, there were several things and options that we had. We can decrease the tax rate. We can use some of those additional tax collections to pay off bonds early to reduce future interest costs to taxpayers. Or we can do a combination of both. And so the recommendation that we're making tonight would be to reduce that debt service tax rate two cents. And as part of the approved budget, we would ask the board to consider adopting a resolution to prepay 12.78 million of the Series 2011 bonds in February of 2021. And this will be a savings of 7.9 million in future interest costs to taxpayers. And so as I, just in summary, we will be recommending a total tax rate of 1.3031 cents, which is a 2.36 cent reduction from the 2019 tax rate.
So this is a public, this is a public hearing. I do not believe we had anyone sign up for the open session for the public hearing, no. And this will be some. And this will be, this will be considered for a vote and item E further on down the agenda tonight. Thank you, Diane. So this concludes the hearing, and we'll move on to the reports of the superintendent. Item A, information on the 2020-2021 school year opening. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, thank you. This is, just for some clarity, there is no action tonight on tonight's agenda that would change anything that the board decided on July the 31st about opening remotely and beginning in person on September the 8th. And my remarks tonight are just an overview of the beginning of school. So as we closed last school year in a statewide shutdown, we asked for feedback from stakeholders, and there were a few themes about that stakeholder feedback, about the remote instruction that happened last spring. One of the themes was the, the parents wished that we would make remote more robust and engaging and also closer to a regular scheduled school day and make it where we have fewer logins for people to remember and align our remote to an in-person experience as much as possible. And we took that feedback and worked this summer to try to change our instruction to be able to incorporate that feedback into our lessons. And so also, the virus continued to get a little bit worse in June and July. And with the recommendation of the Tarrant County Health Department on August, the board decided to open on August the 17th in a remote-only instruction. During the summer, our teachers worked very hard to provide lessons that were like our traditional school beginning. We had administrators that worked very hard to provide relevant professional development for teachers and appropriate expectations for students and families and central staff and others like grounds and maintenance and construction and nutrition certainly did their part to have us as prepared as possible on opening day of school. And that intense work leading up to the 17th included hundreds of fixes from our technology and the help desk that particular weekend before school started. And really, things went about as well as could be expected on day one, and we can continue to try to get a little bit better every single day. That said, I want everybody to hear me say, I understand it is not ideal. I understand that in-person instruction is not well-suited for some students. I understand it's very difficult for some parents and students, especially parents of younger students. I understand there's multiple devices, and we heard a speaker tonight that had six boys with a whole bunch of different devices there and all trying to have school at the same time. That is incredibly difficult. I understand that, and we have many things to overcome. So on day two, because the opening of school went so well on day one, on day two, we began really transitioning toward a successful reopening of campuses on September the 8th and really trying to have a second first day of school on September the 8th. And our principals and our teachers have been working tirelessly to try to make that happen, really since day two and before, even before that. So I'd like to have a current health update. And so joining us tonight via WebEx is Amy Taldo, and Amy is our Director of Health Services, and she's going to update us on the current health situation in Tarrant County.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Ryan. As Dr. Ryan mentioned, the last time we met was at the end of July. And so what I'd like to do tonight is just compare and contrast the numbers in Tarrant County from July 23rd to August 23rd. Since our last meeting, Tarrant County Public Health has a... Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're having a hard time hearing you. So you either need to turn something up or step a little bit closer to the mic, maybe?
Okay. Is that better?
Not really.
How about now? Nope? Play up. Can you hear me now?
A little better. It's a little better.
Okay, I will talk very loud. How is this?
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Ryan. I would like to go over and compare the COVID numbers from July 23rd to yesterday, August 23rd. Since our last meeting, Tarrant County Public Health has established five metrics for safer in-person instruction. Those five metrics are the following: a positivity rate that is 10% or less, ideally less than 5%; the rate of cases reported needs to be less than 2,000 cases per week; COVID-like illnesses trending down for a two-week period; the percentage of hospital beds occupied needs to be below 10%; and the last one is four weeks of stable or declining case counts. On July 23rd, the United States was sitting at over 3 million cases, 3,973,370. Today, we sit at 5,728,363. Texas, on July 23rd, sat at 351,618. Yesterday, they were sitting at 577,537. Tarrant County, on July 23rd, was at 23,536. Yesterday, they were at 39,811. The new cases on July 23rd was 871. Yesterday, new cases were at 255, and I am glad to say that today's new cases are at 109. The metrics back in July 23rd, the positivity rate was at 13%. Yesterday, the positivity rate was at 9%, which is under the 10% metric. On July 23rd, the current rate of reported cases for the week of July 25th was 3,882. Yesterday, the current rate of reported cases for the week of August 15th was 3,900. This is the marker that has not quite improved as some of the other metrics have. Current, the current COVID-like illness data for July 23rd, it was a percentage of 5.1. Yesterday, the current COVID-like illness data on, for the last two weeks, August 8th, it was 3.7, and August 22nd, it was 2.2. So again, showing a decline of trending down for over two weeks. The current hospital bed data back in July 23rd was 20%. Yesterday, the current hospital bed data was at 9%, again, showing the metric is being met. The last metric that I would like to talk about is the current case count for the last four weeks. So in July, we had a range of new cases from 2,500 to 4,100. Last four weeks in, the last four, currently the last four weeks, we are sitting anywhere between 3,500 to 4,800. Again, those weekly case counts are the metric that is not being met at this time. Overall, Tarrant County numbers are trending down, and if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them.
Dr. Ryan, did you want to finish and go back to her? Would you like to?
We can go, yeah, we can go back. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate, appreciate those numbers, and clearly, the trends are getting better. Things are better today than on July the 31st, when the board voted to open on September the 8th in person, and we are on track to open on September the 8th. And we also need to continue the downward trend. We do have PPE from TEA and other vendors that are arriving daily, and everything is supposed to be here by September the 1st for almost everything. So we're in good shape, we will be in good shape by then with PPE. We're going to be rolling out a daily self-screener app for staff to self-screen, for parents and students to screen, for visitors to screen before they come into our facilities, and that's to encourage people, really, who are not feeling well, to go ahead and stay home. And I know that for many years, people have sent kids to school where they might not have felt all that great, and we're asking people, if that's the case, please stay home and keep your kids at home to be able to keep everybody healthy. Our campuses and campus staff are working on social distancing, and TEA's rule for that is six feet apart, of course, when feasible, but many times, it's not feasible, and especially with the more students that are involved in our schools. So we're going to have an increased emphasis on masking, on temporary barriers and dividers, assigned seats, coordinating traffic patterns in the building, students facing one direction in the classroom, and of course, hand hygiene, all things that go together to make a safe learning environment for students as well as for teachers. And as I've walked the halls, I've seen many teachers and staff that are adhering to this guidance of masking and distancing. And I think most of us know, we've also fallen short on some of these items in the last couple of days. And I want you to know that I take responsibility for all of those shortcomings, and we are going to get them corrected as soon as possible. I met with our leadership team today, and we have a renewed emphasis on face covering, social distancing, and hand hygiene. We're also going to be continuing to communicate with our staff and adjust our practices over the next few days to be better prepared when students arrive in person on September the 8th. I know we all want to be in school. We all want to have games. We want to have our kids play in the band and cheer and the drill team and all the different fall events. And we're going to need everyone pulling together to make this happen without going back into some sort of remote again, only because we have to keep large outbreaks from happening. It's everyone's job at school and away from school. To do what it takes as a community, we all have to be a part in keeping our community healthy, and we can't let our guard down. We can't get complacent because the numbers are getting better. We have to keep our guard up to be able to protect our staff and protect our students. I believe in our staff. I believe in our families, and I believe that we can successfully open on September the 8th, but we need everybody in our community pulling together to do so. We all want to be in person. We all want to see our kids compete. We all want to be committed to masking and distancing and hand washing and keeping all of us safe and healthy. And I do want to thank the board for setting the path forward with your vote on July the 31st for both in-person and remote learning for all of our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Did we have any trustees that had questions for Amy while she's still on, on her numbers? Becky?
Amy, actually, maybe this is a better question for Dr. Ryan, but could you send us or have Dr. Ryan send us what those metrics are in writing against something? And then I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly. This was developed, this is Tarrant County's development, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
All right, thank you. I know this is, it reads pretty much what the direction I'm hearing from TEA too, so. All right, thank you.
Do we have any other, any other questions for Amy or Dr. Ryan regarding opening? Mindy, you said the echo was bad on your part?
It's not bad coming from the WebEx people that are speaking, but everyone speaking from the boardroom, the echo is pretty bad on this side.
Thank you, Mindy. So any other questions for Amy at this point, so she can, we can go on? Amy, thank you so much for bringing us the updated information. We appreciate you and all that the nurses are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Move on to item, that was for information only, so no action required. We'll move on to item B, Act on Approval of Submission of Asynchronous Instruction Attendants, the Funding Plan, and the Final Attestation by Superintendent. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, the asynchronous instructional plan is going to enable our school to provide the best mix of synchronous and asynchronous remote instruction in order to participate in this method. We do have to have the board take action on our asynchronous plan and send it to TEA for their approval. And so we have Ms. Tovar here and Ms. Norman here with us to be able to present the asynchronous plan. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Schnapp.
We can hear you. I don't think it's coming through the microphones, though.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
I really think I'm only hearing you because you're standing here. Is it going through the microphones, Kyle? I'm not thinking that it is. Can y'all hear Mindy and Jessie?
We can hear, but it's still with a really bad echo.
Yeah, it's a bad echo.
It's not a volume thing at all. We can hear the volume great, it's just the echo.
Test, 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 test. Still a bad echo, Mindy?
Yeah.
It's an echo chamber. We didn't, we didn't have the issue at all till here recently. Before then, it was fine.
We're going to, we're going to wait just a minute, because I know there's a lot of parents that want to hear this, so we're going to make sure we have this.
So I just heard from another parent that's listening in over the WebEx online, and they're, they're getting that bad echo too. So whatever we can do to fix that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mindy. Mindy, is it echo? Yes. Test, test, test. How is it now, Mindy? Still echoing?
Yeah, big time.
Test? Still echo?
Still echoing.
Maybe it's your, the room you're in, ready?
I don't think so. I'm hearing it from the parents.
I'm sorry?
I'm hearing it from parents that are trying to listen via WebEx too. Yeah, parents, teachers, I'm hearing it from several different people. I had one parent say that perhaps we have people in the boardroom that have the WebEx open on their computers, and those, those might be causing the echo. Just a thought.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Is this working? Can you see us?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, is there echo?
No.
Not at all. You're echo-free.
Okay.
He didn't have an echo either.
Okay, good, good. Well, goodness, now, I should have put some lipstick on, because I thought I was going to have a mask on, so you're just going to have to deal with it at 9:30, I suppose. Do I have Brad kicking us off and Laney joining us already, or?
I think they're still having issues in the boardroom with everyone else and the echo.
Okay, there's Laney.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are coming through clear.
Is Brad going to talk, or where are we?
Janice, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll just speak very briefly.
Okay.
As Dr. Schnouts was saying, that TEA does need us to submit certain responses to certain questions in regards to our remote learning, and so this remote asynchronous instruction attendance funding method plan speaks specifically to when students are remote. So right now, students are remote, and then September 8th, we would still have some students in person, doesn't affect in-person attendance, but you do still have some students who might still be remote. The other thing about it is that this does would then allow us greater flexibility, so that when a student who had planned to attend in person misses for whatever reason, they could participate in this asynchronous plan on that given day they were out and then still be counted present at school. And so there is an element of flexibility that creates, makes it a more favorable plan. When we got started, TEA did give us some guidance in the form of exemplars, a template, some rubrics, and some FAQs, and so what Laney and I started doing?
Can you share the plan?
Can I?
Can you share it?
He's asking me to share the plan. Oh, the video? Oh, you mean the slides?
No.
Okay, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to do the slides now. So what we started doing was taking the bigger, more complete plan that had been produced for, by all the different departments, and we started answering the questions specific to, to how to fulfill the questions that TEA had. So let me see if I can get the slides to come up at the same time. If I can't do it in a minute or two, then maybe somebody in the boardroom could just click the laptop, and that might be faster. I don't know if it's there or not. Let's see. Just one moment. We got on slide one? Okay, so if somebody, if somebody is clicking just right there, if that's faster, are y'all happier with that? Is that working okay? Let's see.
Shannon, can you see it?
Yeah, that's great. Whoever's doing that, thank you so much. That's faster than me trying to find it, so that's great.
Have we lost them? I think we already have lost them.
Did you lose?
Okay.
Do you want us to keep going, or? So I'm going to keep looking at slide two. All right, so then, let's see. Oh, I promise I'm not texting my family. I've got a text here from Dr. Ryan. Oh, okay. He said Shannon has to be the one to share. Okay, hold on, let's, here I go. Let's see. Kyle. Okay, and then Kyle, so I'm going to push, I'm going to push present when I bring it up, right, Kyle? Let's see. Yes, ma'am?
We're, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're all going to log, we're going to spread out and log on the WebEx.
Okay, that's a great plan. I will, and then if, I'll see if I can't get this to share from here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shannon, that's great.
Yeah, we can see it now. There you go.
Thank y'all for being patient with us. Ms. Tovar?
Thank you, trustee Pardo. Are we ready?
No, ma'am, not quite yet. I was just saying thank you for being patient with us.
Oh, I thought you were talking to our people who are watching.
And the, and parents too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the Stars, and then the Stars hockey game just started.
Wow.
I'm not watching the Stars hockey game, just to make that clear.
That's why we had a weird echo. We were hearing what was happening inside the.
No, no.
So, is that a good sound check there? Lisa, can you hear me? Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
I can, I can, yes, we can hear.
Okay.
I believe, I cannot see, Dr. Ryan, I can't see if everyone has logged back on.
Doug is here.
And I know Louis, we have Louis and Becky.
Shannon, can you stop sharing for one second? I want to see if we can get everybody on the screen just for a check.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so we're waiting for.
Kyle, can you hear us?
Yes. We're just missing Jess, missing Jorge, and he said.
Kyle, let's go ahead.
Okay. All right, we're good.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to kind of go ahead and move us on to slide number two. Basically, TEA knows that our overall plan encompasses everything that you've been hearing about in Ju, well, July and August, you know, especially coming into the opening of school. They know that the overall plan is much larger than these elements that we're asked to respond to for them, and they, so they know it's a lot more comprehensive, but due to the disruption caused by the COVID emergency, we have to submit our plan for review and approval in order to get our average daily attendance. And so this plan comes into play whenever students are remote. So if you do have students who are present in a face-to-face, you know, after, on September 8th and moving forward, we have them, but we also then still have some students who will not be in face-to-face. You might also have some students whose family have chosen the face-to-face, but the student is absent for some sort of reason, and that student could then participate in the asynchronous remote plan. And so it really gives us kind of that right mix of synchronous, face-to-face, asynchronous, to kind of bring it all together that works best for us, at the same time, it's going to generate that attendance for funding. And so TEA is only going to be able to review the asynchronous remote funding plan, that learning approach that's in the submission, so they don't want us to send the everything else. But ultimately, the idea is this is going to provide us that flexibility that we need. So in terms of actually having a method for, for the funding in this, in this remote asynchronous or independent instruction, there are a couple of things to know. The key here, of course, is daily engagement and interaction each day, whether it's synchronous, I'm with my teacher doing my work at that time, asynchronous, maybe I'm having to do it later in the evening and then turn it in when I've had the help of my parents, or in some cases, some of our students will be face-to-face. But in this plan, we don't speak to the face-to-face, because this plan is about the remote time periods or the remote students. Another thing about it, though, that is daily engagement. So you might have a student who's very clever, who says, well, I'll just do all my assignments upfront on Monday for the whole week, and then I'll get to be present the rest of the week. No, that's not how it works. And on the reverse, you may have somebody who wants to listen and really reflect on the whole work, weeks' worth of work and try to do it all on Friday. No, they would not be counted present for the days that they didn't turn in that daily engagement piece. And so, again, one strength, though, is even though you have those two limitations, that if you do have a student who's planning on in-person, but physically unable to be present for a particular day, they can still do that async remote for any reason. Additionally, this also helps us, like I said, cover our funding for an ADA period, and then also our secondary folks are still having to be able to take attendance for that 90-10 rule, where students have to be present 90% of the time to receive credit in their course. So this is the timeline of how it works. Earlier, Dr. Schnouts mentioned that back in July the 29th, we submitted a letter of intent. At that time, the options to TEA were to submit one saying we were going to go completely synchronous, we had there's an annotation for that, or if you wanted to go with this particular more flexible plan, and so in here, we did submit that. It results in contingent approval, which basically means TEA says, you're fine, let's move forward, but we want you to submit a plan that attests to certain things, certain promises the district makes in terms of requirements to ensure that the instruction is rigorous and robust enough to warrant getting a day's worth of funding for the student, but then also, TEA needs enough time to review your plan and give you feedback, and then you can make any revisions that might be needed. By the end of the semester, though, if you don't have approved plan, then funding for asynchronous remote attendance would stop. So we're kind of in a grace period based on contingent approval, and our goal here is to be able to submit what we think of the plan as we have it to TEA, the particular questions that they've asked us, in order to start getting their feedback as soon as possible, because it could take 30 to 40 days for them to review our plan and give us any sort of revisions. And then that's why we have it here, where upon approval this evening, the superintendent would be able to submit the plan when it is finalized. At this time, I'm going to introduce our friend Laney, who's back with us, and I'm so happy to have her as a partner on this project, and she's going to talk a little bit about the work that had occurred previously, and how all those pieces come together with the four big areas that TEA is going to ask us to respond to.
Good evening, board. The remainder of this presentation will address the four main areas that we must address in our plan, which were represented in our July presentation, and they're just structured under the categories that they provide for us. So the first one we're going to talk about is the instructional schedule. We're then going to talk about our materials design that we intentionally designed for our learners, and our student progress, and then our implementation plan. So now Shannon is going to kick us off first with our instructional schedule.
First, we have to address for TEA are the instructional schedule attestations. Basically, these are what the district is saying, these are the things that we will do to ensure that we are providing a robust, rigorous, full day of academic content, and that is predictable, with predictable, sufficient teacher interaction with students. And so this particular portion will have a couple of big expectations around it. TEA is looking for that instructional schedule to outline the expected amount of time that students will interact with academic content, and it will also expect us to outline the amount of time for students to interact with their teachers and receive instructional support. So now Laney's going to give us some highlights about how the overall plan meets those requirements.
So from this template, there's questions that we have to answer that you'll see here on the left, and then our answers on the right, and this is the format for submission. And so I'd like to highlight a few ways on how we are meeting the instructional schedule requirements. In our school schedules we presented in July, we have daily live learning and independent learning embedded in each schedule for elementary and secondary. We also highlighted that we have daily engagement and daily exit tickets for engagement for our learners in our LMS that we've adopted, and that would be CSAL for elementary and Canvas for secondary. Also, through that LMS, we will monitor attendance in our instructional schedule and provide new content lessons recorded for students who may have missed a live lesson. Also, it's important that in the schedule that we create opportunities for students to interact with teachers and classmates daily in various forms, and then also that we're differentiating to meet the needs of all of our learners, and this was included in our July presentation where we addressed how we would meet these, the needs of these learners for special education, dyslexia, gifted and talented, and through intervention. And so now Shannon's going to talk about our material design.
What TEA has us respond to is about material design attestations, and they want to ensure that the district has a full TEAC aligned curriculum, and that we have a coherent logical course sequence for students, and there's an evidence of intentionally designing and adapting work for that remote or online experience, and that we're making sure that students have in their hands the specific instructional materials that they need and that those instructional materials are being used. A couple of things TEA will look for when they evaluate our plan to provide us with feedback is that we have adopted a full TEAC aligned curriculum that can be executed in an asynchronous remote learning environment, and that also that the instructional materials include specifically designed resources to support students with disabilities, NEls, in an asynchronous remote environment, helping us meet the requirement of faith.
So our materials design really focuses on four main areas. The first one is that teachers record live lessons to provide equity and access to new content for our remote learners. The second is daily lessons and activities that are designed around our scope and sequence with multiple opportunities for our students to engage and master our content. The third is the lesson design process and work. as soon as possible, because it could take 30 to 40 days for them to review our plan and give us any sort of revisions. And then, that's why we have it here, where, upon approval this evening, the superintendent would be able to submit the plan when it is finalized. At this time, I'm going to introduce our friend Laney, who's back with us, and I'm so happy to have her as a partner on this project. And she's going to talk a little bit about the work that had occurred previously, and how all those pieces come together with the four big areas that TEA is going to ask us to respond to.
Good evening, Board. The remainder of this presentation will address the four main areas that we must address in our plan, which were represented in our July presentation. And they're just structured under the categories that they provide for us. So the first one we're going to talk about is the instructional schedule. We're then going to talk about our materials design that we intentionally designed for our learners, our student progress, and then our implementation plan. So now Shannon is going to kick us off first with our instructional schedule.
The first we have to address for TEA are the instructional schedule attestations. Basically, these are what the district is saying, these are the things that we will do to ensure that we are providing a robust, rigorous, full day of academic content, and that it's predictable, with predictable, sufficient teacher interaction with students. And so this particular portion will have a couple of big expectations around it. TEA is looking for that instructional schedule to outline the expected amount of time that students will interact with academic content. And it will also expect us to outline the amount of time for students to interact with their teachers and receive instructional support. So now Laney's going to give us some highlights about how the overall plan meets those requirements.
So from this template, there's questions that we have to answer that you'll see here on the left, and then our answers on the right. And this is the format for submission. And so I'd like to highlight a few ways on how we are meeting the instructional schedule requirements. In our school schedules we presented in July, we have daily live learning and independent learning embedded in each schedule for elementary and secondary. We also highlighted that we have daily engagement and daily exit tickets for engagement for our learners in our LMS that we've adopted, and that would be CSOL for elementary and Canvas for secondary. Also, through that LMS, we will monitor attendance in our instructional schedule and provide new content lessons recorded for students who may have missed a live lesson. Also, it's important that in the schedule that we create opportunities for students to interact with teachers and classmates daily in various forms. And then also that we're differentiating to meet the needs of all of our learners. And this was included in our July presentation, where we addressed how we would meet the needs of these learners for special education, dyslexia, gifted and talented, and through intervention. And so now Shannon's going to talk about our material design.
What TEA has us respond to is about material design attestations. And they want to ensure that the district has a full TICs-aligned curriculum, and that we have a coherent logical course sequence for students. And there's an evidence of intentionally designing and adapting work for that remote or online experience, and that we're making sure that students have in their hands the specific instructional materials that they need, and that those instructional materials are being used. A couple of things TEA will look for when they evaluate our plan to provide us with feedback is that we have adopted a full TICs-aligned curriculum that can be executed in an asynchronous remote learning environment, and that also that the instructional materials include specifically designed resources to support students with disabilities, NELs, in an asynchronous remote environment, helping us meet the requirement of faith.
So our materials design really focuses on four main areas. The first one is that teachers record live lessons to provide equity and access to new content for our remote learners. The second is daily lessons and activities that are designed around our scope and sequence, with multiple opportunities for our students to engage and master our content. The third is the lesson design process and workflow that our teachers will engage in. And this was designed by the Curriculum and Instruction Team, where they will follow a protocol that utilizes best practices for asynchronous instruction for our remote learners. And then the fourth is we will continue to provide support through accommodations, modifications, and supplemental materials for our students with disabilities and our English learners. And now Shannon's going to talk to us about student progress.
Thank you, Laney. In regards to student progress attestations, as remember, as we go through completing the submission for TEA, these attestations are things that we're checking that the district is promising to fulfill, and that those open-ended responses that Laney's talking about, those will be the highlighted information that we have answering the questions that TEA has about our overall plan. But student progress attestations, they really want to see that... Okay, I think it's... I don't know if it froze or...
Yeah, let's go. One second.
And everybody got knocked off for a while. We're glad to see your...
We had a slight internet outage hit us real quick. So let's give us one second for everybody to connect back.
Okay.
Hi, Jim. Thanks for all you're doing.
Do you remember kind of about, who was talking? Was it Laney or myself when it went in?
It was you, Shannon, and you had just started the student progress, open response to expectations.
Okay. Oh, okay, great. So I finished the attestation part, and I was getting ready to pick it off to Laney, except then that's when it froze. I thought, I don't know where she went, but I can do her part if I have to.
Now, I think it froze right as you were about to do that.
Okay, great. Is she's much better at it? And I think she was headed back to her office.
Yeah, I think it was the next slide also.
Okay. So maybe this one about student progress?
Yep. That's where it froze.
Perfect.
At least on my end.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Are y'all ready for us to start?
She is.
Okay, great.
Yep. If you would wait just a minute, I don't believe everyone's logged back in.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Do we win for perseverance as presenters?
The whole night, the whole night, and our parents.
I counted seven trustees.
We have seven? Do we have Dr. Ryan? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, perfect. Are we ready to move ahead then with Laney?
Yes, ma'am. Let's go ahead. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Okay, so for student progress, this really goes hand-in-hand with student engagement. And so there's really four things that we're focused on with student progress, and that is that students will engage daily in live learning and independent learning. We will also monitor student progress in our LMS, CSOL, and Canvas, and through the daily exit activity, which will provide feedback to the teacher on that student progress. Also, we will continue to progress monitor through our assessments and our standards-based grading at the elementary level. And then the last thing is that campus grading and assessment procedures will be the same for our in-person students and our remote students. Now Shannon's going to take us to our last section, which is our implementation plan.
So the last question that TEA asks us to respond to has to do with the implementation attestations. And this involves learning for both teachers, students, and families. One portion, of course, is the specific supports for asynchronous instruction, so that to see that teachers clearly have the opportunity to learn the new skills that would be required of them proactively, and then also have some continuing job embedded, staff development, so they can continue to increase their skills, to make sure that they can have time to internalize what the curriculum is like in, under this new lens of some sort of asynchronous or synchronous remote learning, and being able to respond to data. The other part that TEA asks us about has to do with explicit communication and support for families, to make sure that they're able to complete that synchronous work from home. And so when TEA has their rubric to determine if we were meeting those requirements, they're going to be looking for both initial and ongoing professional development for educators that's planned and specific to supporting asynchronous instruction, as well as support training and resources that, along with explicit communication to our families, in order to support that asynchronous work at home. And so now Laney's going to talk to us a little bit about how we respond to those.
So Board, as you know, our teachers have engaged in professional learning over the summer and have continued to do that. But we know that continued training and professional development for teachers and our family partnerships will lead us to successful implementation of this plan. And so I'd like to highlight a few implementation strategies for this. So we will continue to provide professional development and training in our LMS, CSOL, and Canvas. And then we will also continue our learning in a blended learning model. Already this week, we gave a needs assessment to our campus leadership, as well as our teachers, to see what our next steps are in this training to be proactive. And this week, we are focusing on instructional technology tools. And then next, we're continuing to explore blended learning and provide a better training for our teachers. This is also in partnership with our Curriculum and Instruction Team, instructional coaches and liaisons, and Dr. Kay Rogers and her team with Blended Specialist, to provide this ongoing support and training. It is important that this is ongoing, and we continue to create a needs assessment for our teachers to see how we can continue to train and provide learning with remote learners, and what's best practices for our students and our families at home. In addition, our family partnerships will continue to be important. And so district communication has already been streamlined for families on our GCICD website, as well as social media updates frequently going out for our families. We also created a passport for families, which is a module that outlines remote model and provides tips to help our families and support their learners at home. And the last thing that we're doing to provide ongoing support of our families is to continue to offer Help Desk and Parent Academies throughout the year. And just like with our teachers, we will continue to receive feedback and assess the needs of our families, and how we can continue to help support them with their learners at home. So that concludes our presentation for tonight, and we're happy to talk.
Thank you, Shannon and Laney. And I'll place the recommendation, and then we'll see if there needs to be clarification. Recommendations for the board trustees to approve the submission of the asynchronous attendance funding plan, and final attestation once finalized by the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? And if the trustee can just speak out, since we've got this presentation, I can't see you.
Lisa.
Lisa.
Doug, go ahead.
I move with superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Doug, in a second.
I'll second Louie.
Thank you, Louie. Now we can go on to any questions for Laney or Shannon. Jesse?
Yeah, Shannon, on the timeline, and please, you might have said something, and I just missed it, but between now, or I should say Monday, when we started on the last week, until we actually submit the plan, are we then going to get the funding for then? For, you know, because the deadline, or actually not the deadline, but the date should be submitted. October 1st is the date that our plan should be submitted. And then it says it'll take 30 to 45 days for the plan to be, once it's reviewed and all of that will get notified. But in the meantime, are we getting the ADA for when we started, the 17th, through when they do approve it? Or if they don't, then it gets sent back? But in the meantime, are we getting funding for that timeframe? Shannon, did that make sense?
Shannon, you're muted.
Yep. Shannon, you need to unmute, please. There we go.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am. Now we can hear you.
So that's an excellent point of clarification about the grace period. When we submitted our letter of intent, we were granted contingent approval, which means, yes, during this time period, where we are working with TEA to finalize our plan, that we are going to be able to receive that ADA for those students. So during this time period, yes, we are protected. But then if we were to get to the end of the semester and not have a plan that TEA could approve of, moving forward, we would have to do something different, because that's when the grace period would end.
Okay. And then this plan would be for pre-K through 12, so it impacts every single student that we have asynchronously receiving instruction, correct?
Anyone who is remote asynchronous, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Becky?
Yeah. So in looking at the plan, of course, I know, I agree with Jesse, some of this stuff jumped out at me as if, I mean, TEA is saying, you know, though, we'll have the approval by the fourth, six weeks period. I'm like, well, that's great, that's January. But so, thanks, TEA. All these, so as y'all walked us through the attestations and the open response, the open response, those were questions that TEA, that was, those were the, those were questions from TEA that we had to respond to, right? We didn't make up those questions.
That's correct. Those are TEA's questions.
Okay. And so this is really, for better or for worse, where the rubber met the road in terms of what our online learning had to look like, is because we had to be able to respond to each of these questions. So, for example, what are the expectations for daily student interaction and content? And the fact that we had to prove that this is a full day of instruction, in other words, TEA was expecting a full day of instruction, not a, you know, show up on Monday and check out, or that it's a limited participation, that they were expecting a full day. Is that correct?
Well, they do have a set number of minutes, and then some of the other plans that they talk about. But what we're really, what we're seeing is that, and I think sometimes we say a full day, but also too, a full day's worth of academic content. And so you need opportunities for there to be some time where students are engaged synchronously with their teacher, but then also maybe some asynchronous practice time where they're working independently, as opposed to trying to be in front of a computer screen from 8 to 4, which would, you know, we know that's not, that's not going to be beneficial to students. But ultimately, there are some pieces that are required for TEA to be able to count this as our ADA. And one of those pieces is that there would be some sort of daily engagement with the teacher, some sort of daily interaction, and not to be able to say, "Well, I'm going to do all my work on Monday, and then I can do whatever I want on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday." And that's just, yes, you're right. That's where TEA put the rubber to the road, as you put it.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Shannon. I mean, this is, in traditional TEA style, as we have seen for the last 90 days, they did not leave any stone unturned as far as the questions that we had to answer in fleshing out an entire K through 12 online plan. And so, and it's, I guess it's important kind of for us to keep in mind, too, that we still have to do all of this, even when we reopen for in-person on the 8th, that this plan is still what's going forward for the kids that are choosing to stay online as well. But, correct?
Yes, that would be correct. So you're going to have some students who are in-person. You're going to have some students who are remote. And so that has been one of the, I think, one of the opportunities or challenges in terms of planning how that would look, so that a teacher could have a reasonable, you know, a workday that's, you know, similar to where she's at, where students, and two students who would be at the school building for the normal amount of time, instead of maybe doing a half a day or something like that. And so some of the sample schedules that you have seen do reflect that idea that we're trying to get the right amount of academic content, and also two times where we're synchronous and asynchronous, and also something we can do at the same time that teachers are doing in-person, face-to-face, with students who do return to campus.
Okay. And so with this plan, Shannon, you know, we've been doing this for six whole days now. We're experts. As things go forward, and teachers are learning, you know, what works best for them, what we're finding, you know, is going to be more appropriate in terms of maybe a particular course or a different grade level, will we be able, I mean, is this flexible enough that we can work within the framework of this plan? Or is there an opportunity to resubmit some things to TEA, saying, hey, you know, we've discovered that best practice is actually to do this rather than that? How, and do we have the ability to be flexible, just like our classroom teachers do?
I'm going to respond, and then see if Laney would also like to add some more to it. I would say the reality is, is that TEA is going to engage with us in some sort of dialogue about our plan. And so there might also be places for revision that will be highlighted for us by the agency that we'll have to address. Interestingly, you know, they ask for a sample instructional schedule. Not every single elementary's, every single grade's instructional schedule. So I think they do allow for the, you know, the realities, that there are going to be some differences a little bit from campus to campus. Laney, did you want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, I agree, Shannon. And I think we have enough flexibility and autonomy within the plan to be able to do a needs assessment. And as we're continuing to learn and grow in remote learning, we can make those adjustments. And so absolutely, I agree with that.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Becky. Doug, I believe you had some questions?
Yeah. Is there the monitoring component to make sure we're following this plan?
From TEA or from...
Internally, for us to make sure, you know, we've got this plan, we've got to want to make sure we follow it, or tweak it as needed. But is there a plan for the monitoring portion to see that we are achieving what we set out to do?
You know, I'm not sure if that is part of the larger, bigger, comprehensive plan that had been established. I do think that when you have folks like our executive directors for secondary and for elementary, that that's one of the roles that they do in terms of leadership work with their principals, in terms of supporting employees to ensure that they can fulfill the requirements of said plan. I think also, too, where is a, because of the end, there is a final attestation where we do, the superintendent would say, and the board would say, "Yes, we've been implementing this plan with fidelity, that we would want to be able to speak to you honestly in terms of saying, yes, we have been doing the plan as described." I think also this would be an opportunity for Student Voice, where we're going to be able to collect feedback from students on what is and is not working. And sometimes, students will tell you the everything, right, many times. And so I think that'll be another opportunity for us to have some sort of internal feedback with parents and students to find out what is being implemented well, and what needs to be shorn up a little bit, just as we heard earlier this evening from some of the feedback from our, from our parents in regards to textbook pickup and that sort of thing.
Okay. And on the attendance side, for the students having to check in, or teachers having to check them in, or do the self-assessment, the exit, I forgot what it's called, exit poll? How has attendance been so far this year?
So I'm going to see if, I don't have the nose numbers right in front of me. We can do a little board update. Dr. Schnouts was having me just kind of take a look in terms of how is that going. I know that our Skyward group, our division, as well as our PMS people, put together a set of procedures that were very clear about those first and second days, as well as giving teachers something that they could have in their hands to be able to talk about, what do I mark in my, in the learning management system, what do I mark in Skyward, so that we know what type of attendance has been generated. Dr. Schnouts, do you want to speak to anything else about attendance in particular?
Yeah, I think, Doug, at this point, it's still a little early, as far as just being through that first week. What Shannon did touch on is we're looking at kind of a three-year comparative analysis for this year and the two, you know, two previous years, to see kind of where we stand over these first few weeks. to see kind of where we stand over these first few weeks. And just, you know, as we start to transition to, back to in-person on the eighth. And so we will, that's something that we're going to conclude here, hopefully in the next week or two, and then provide that to you guys in an update fashion.
Okay, well, thank you. And I do want, you know, of course, I want to see enrollment numbers that we've, you know, we've gotten some updates on enrollment numbers, but attendance numbers as well for the students we have enrolled, because they have to attend 90% of their classes to get credit. And, you know, I know it's a new process that our teachers are having, are doing, and that the students are doing as well. And we could easily have some of those overlooked, especially as we get used to that new process. And I don't know if there's a, if there's some waivers in place for the first few days that we might, some of those students might miss that, or some of the teachers might miss that, so we can still get the students' credit for being there when they were there. So enrollment as well as attendance is what I'm looking for.
Got you, okay.
Do we have any other questions for Laney or Shannon? Jessie?
Yeah, just one extra question, Brad, in regards to the comments that you were just making. How are we communicating this plan to parents and students? And the reason that I'm saying that is, as we started the presentation, or Shannon started the presentation, the two examples that she used are very good examples about a student missing Monday, but I'll make it up during the week, or I'm going to do all my week work on Monday and not bother the additional, you know, the additional days. How are we communicating that to the parents and the students in terms of the importance of them adhering to this? Especially because it does impact us financially, and so that is huge. So, any thoughts on that?
Brad, if you don't mind, Brad, I'm going to jump in just briefly. One of the things that I did talk to Tiffany Cunningham, you know, she's our new director of student services. You know, she was the assistant principal at Grapevine High School previous. She, I did visit with her, and she was telling me about how she's, and we kind of collaborated, and she showed me what she had added in regards to like a supplement to the student code of conduct. And then so that is in there, as well as a lot of the communication pieces that our communications department and our technology department have been putting out there as well. So there are a couple of places that I can speak to that I know that they've been working hard at that. But Brad, did you want to add some more?
Yeah, I'll just say this too, that I feel like our campus leaders have done a good job in kind of communicating this out to our teachers. And that's really where it's been most effective, Jessie, is that our teachers are laying out the expectations in their classes with our students. You know, and having that daily progress check, that daily exit ticket to basically ensure that, you know, that we get attendance, the credit, you know, for the child being engaged for that day. But just that constant reminder, and I will say this, that's the most effective way, okay? Just that everyday ongoing dialogue between the teacher and the student. And we will continue to kind of reinforce those reminders with our campus leaders, with our teachers to encourage that. The next thing, part of this process too, and this is not really part of that communication piece, but we are also, upon approval of this plan, we're required to post this on our website. So it will be out there, you know, for the duration, as long as, you know, we're in remote status for some of our learners. But the main thing, in the most effective way, is just between the teacher and the student, and those continuous reminders, and us checking in with students that, you know, missed a day or two of engagement, is having our campus leaders, our assistant principals, our teachers, our counselors following up with those students and families, checking in to make sure that, you know, that they don't miss too much, you know? And so, you know, one thing that, kind of going back on a previous question, you know, as we've all talked about, you know, ideally, we'd love for all of our kids, and obviously this pandemic to be gone and everybody be in person. But we're trying to mirror the rigor, the robustness on the remote side is with our in-person learning, okay? And so that when kids have to pivot, when they have to go to remote status, whatever, it will be, it'll be as seamless as possible, you know? And so that's been our goal, you know, to echo Dr. Ryan's sentiments. I'm really proud of our team, our teachers, our campus leaders for this first week, and just kind of how we continue to build and improve upon this remote experience. It is not ideal, but certainly it's a vast improvement over where we were in the spring, you know? So, anyway, just something to be proud of. We're not where we want to be, but we're getting there. We're moving, you know, moving the bar forward and for our kiddos, so.
Well, and I appreciate that, and thank you so very much, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Jessie, thank you, Dr. Schnouts. Any other questions? And I can't see a couple of trustees, so if you have any questions, just holler out. Seeing none. Shannon and Laney, thank you both very much for your patience with us and your presentation tonight and your explanation, we really appreciate you both.
You're welcome, thank you for having us.
You're welcome, thank you.
So at this time, we will take a vote. And since I'm not able to see everyone, I will go trustee by trustee. So all those in favor? I will start with the ones I can see, Becky, yea or nay?
Aye.
Jessie?
Yea.
Oh, yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Thank you. I went blank, Louis?
Yes.
Mindy?
You're on mute, Mindy.
Yes.
And Doug?
Yes.
And then I am a yes, the motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to item C, Act on Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, Certified Appraisers and Second Appraisers, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, the district shall appraise teachers annually using the T-Test instrument in accordance with state law and administrative regulations. And the first thing we have to do is approve a list of certified appraisers and second appraisers. And so that list we have provided to you this evening, the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the list of T-Test certified appraisers and second appraisers for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, we have a recommendation, do I have a motion? Jessie?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
In a second.
A second.
Thank you, Mindy. Do we have any questions? Hearing none. We will take, I don't know how I can get everybody on. Hang on just a second. One, two, three, four, five, six, I am missing. Jessie? Okay, I'm going to have to go one by one again.
Yes, for me.
Okay, thank you, Jessie. Becky?
Aye.
Thank you, Doug?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Louis?
Aye.
Mindy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I am a yes, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys. Move on to item D, Act on the 2020 Certified Appraisal Role for the certification of the 2020 collection, of the 2020 collection rate, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, the chief appraiser of the Terran Appraisal District and the Dallas County Appraisal District has to prepare in Certified Property Appraisal Role for, and to the district's assessor on July the 25th, or as soon as possible thereafter. And the district tax assessors and collectors are also required to submit the Certified Appraisal Role to the governing body for acceptance by August the 1st, or as soon as possible thereafter. And so that's what we have tonight. The recommendation is for the board trustees to declare the Certified Appraisal Roles provided by the Terran Appraisal District and the Dallas County Appraisal District as GCIC's official 2020 appraisal role.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, do I have a motion for the recommendation? Becky?
I move we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, in a second.
Second.
Doug, thank you very, thank you, Doug. Any questions? Seeing none, and hearing none. All those in favor, Jessie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mindy?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Becky?
Aye.
And I am a yes, motion carries seven zero. Move on to item E, Act on Adoption of the 2020 Tax Rate.
Yes, we heard the hearing and the presentation by our CFO, Deanne Mooney, earlier in tonight's meeting. And so she has done a great job of working with the board and providing different workshops throughout the spring and the summer to bring us really to this point. And so the proposed maintenance and operations rate is 0.9664, or about 96 cents. This includes a tier-one tax rate of .9164, which is 1.36 cents less than the 2019 tier-one tax rate of 97 cents. Also included is a tier-two tax rate of 5 cents, which is an increase of 1 cent from the 2019 tier-two tax rate, and must be approved by unanimous vote of the board. The tier-two tax rate includes five golden pennies that are not subject to recapture by the state. The proposed debt service tax rate is .3367 cents, which is 2 cents less than the 2019 tax rate of .3567. So, the recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the resolution adopting the 2020 tax rate of .9664 cents, maintenance and operations, which includes the .05 cents per 100 authorized in tax code 26.08, paragraph N-1, and .3367 cents debt service for a total tax rate of $1.3031, which is 2.36 cents less than the total 2019 tax rate.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, I have a motion for this recommendation, Louis?
I make a motion that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation in regards to the tax rate that he just walked through in regards to tier-one and tier-two.
Thank you, Louis, and do I have a second?
This is Jessie, I second.
Thank you, Jessie. Questions? Comments?
Well, I just want to go back to the recommendation real quick. Louis mentioned tier-one and tier-three, but not the INS side. And I just want to make sure we include that as well in the recommendation for the full rate.
Thank you, thank you, Doug.
Do I need to amend it?
It needs to be, you are making your motion to, on the recommendation of Dr. Ryan?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that it's clear.
That is correct, I make my motion on the recommendation of Dr. Ryan, and I stated that at the beginning of that motion.
Okay, thank you, Doug, thank you, Louis. And Deanne, thank you so much, this has been an ongoing, months and months of workshops and meetings. So, thank you very much to you and your team for the great work that you have done in saving the district money and lowering that tax rate. So, we appreciate all the time you've given to us. So do we have any other questions for Deanne before the, before the vote, Doug?
Yeah, I guess it's not related directly to the proposal, but in the tax hearing, you mentioned a recommendation to adopt a resolution to prepay bonds.
Yes.
Is that something we need to address right now as well? I mean, I think we all want to continue to prepay bonds as long as we can, but I don't know if it's part of this.
No, it will be a separate agenda item, and it will be brought to you in a couple of months because it's for the prepayment to happen in February of 2021.
Okay.
It'll be this fall.
Okay, I assume there will be a separate one, but I just wanted to clarify that since it was mentioned in the hearing, and we can continue to pay these things early.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? And Jessie, I can't see you, so do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Becky?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the praise for Deanne's team, but also the coordination of this board over years of strong fiscal management. I mean, Deanne's got all the awards in her office that the district has won for strong financial management. And bond presentation that we were given over the, really, the last two, over the last couple of year and a half or so. We're really fortunate to be in this situation, to be able to lower that bond rate significantly. I mean, 2 cents off of that, that's an enormous cut. We don't have those kinds of opportunities here in GCIC. I know that dropping the M and O, that took a lot of coordination and cooperation with our state legislators, especially Giovanni. And this stuff doesn't happen in a vacuum, and it takes coordinated effort, long-term focus. And Dr. Ryan, I appreciate the team that you've assembled here. And Deanne, I appreciate the work that you do, always keeping us abreast of what the impact of the rate is, and how best to drive those dollars into the tax room, into the classroom. That's enormous, and so we were able to give the teachers a raise this year, and we're able to lower the tax rate for the taxpayers. And that's a win-win, and then you top it off with, we're also saving the taxpayers' money on the bonds as well. And so I just really want to tell you, I appreciate all the hard work that you have done on this. And Dr. Ryan, thank you for having such a great team.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I can see all of the trustees at this time, so all those in favor of the tax rate, 2020 tax rate? Harry, seven zero. Deanne, thank you again, and please pass that on to your team.
I will, thank you.
We'll move on to item F, Act on the 2020-2021 Student Code of Conduct, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this is, of course, the student code of conduct that's going to be in effect for this particular school year. There are not very many changes at all because we don't have, we didn't have a legislative session this summer. Usually, when we have a legislative session, there are quite a few changes to the student code of conduct. That's not the case this year. So, Dr. Gropel is on, he can take you quickly through a couple of those changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you, Lance.
As Dr. Ryan shared, not being a legislative year, there's not a whole lot of changes to the code of conduct because it is driven primarily by statute. And so the two changes that are proposed tonight for the code of conduct for this year are a change to the hearing process for an expulsion in an ad of a word of successful days when referring to a student's placement at our disciplinary alternative campus. Otherwise, no other changes, and it has been reviewed by our attorneys and has their stamp of approval.
Thank you, Lance, for recommendations for the board trustees to adopt the GCIC 2020-2021 student code of conduct.
Dr. Ryan, do I have a motion for the recommendation?
Lisa?
Yes, Jessie, thank you, I can't, there you are, I can see you now.
I'd like to move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jessie, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mindy, any questions? None, seeing none. All those in favor, I can see you all, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, there we go, I can see my hand. Motion carries seven zero. I had to make sure I was voting. We'll move on to item G, Review the 2020-2021 Student Parent Handbook, Dr. Ryan?
Yes, Dr. Gropel will be talking about this as well. This is really the regulations and rules and administrative type of activities that occur based upon the student code of conduct. So, we did have a few changes there, and I'll ask Dr. Gropel to... So we did have a few changes there and I'll ask Dr. Groppel to talk to the board about some of those changes.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ryan. As Dr. Ryan stated, the handbook is kind of our implementation of the code of conduct. There are several changes to the handbook, but I break them down into three primary categories. You have some rewording at the recommendation of our attorneys that doesn't change the intent or the desire, just a changing of wording at their preference to support the district. A second category, I would say, would be a changing in terminology in some of our programs, as well as some of the people who have changed in the roles in GCISD. And I would say the third and the largest portion is anything that we have put in as it relates to the coronavirus and the policies and procedures as that. Shannon shared a supplement that we, or Shannon talked about a supplement that we have added specifically for the coronavirus, outlining procedures and for wearing face coverings for our students and making sure that they're adhering to the expectations and then disciplinary action that can come from not following those expectations as outlined in the code of conduct. So several changes here, but nothing terribly major, other than the addition of the COVID policies that we've outlined and been shared in a board update as well.
Thank you, Dr. Groppel. This is an item for information and so will be subject to the board's questions.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan and Dr. Groppel. Do we have any questions for either one? And Jesse, I'm not able to see you, so I don't know if you've got your hand up.
No, ma'am, no questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And this is information only, so there's no need for a vote. So we have no questions. We'll move on to item H, the update, the 2016 Bond Program.
Thank you. We have Gary with us. Kyle, if you'll give me presenter's rights, please.
Is Gary still here?
He is still here.
I'm here.
Oh, Gary, thank you so much.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
And I'm actually on Paula's laptop, so I'm coming in as Paula on.
There you are.
So I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for hanging in there with us.
Oh, it's.
We really appreciate it.
What we do. I love you guys. So I thank you for having me and I'll be brief. Dr. Ryan, good evening, trustees. I know it's a late night, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be brief, but want you to know that the bond packages continue on amidst what we're dealing with out in the world today. So I wanted to touch base, just as we have last month, or we did last month, package A and B, really consisting of Grapevine High School, Grapevine Elementary, and Glen Hope Elementary. So you can see here, work is complete and we're working on the closeout documents that are required that we'll then send to the district for future use. So, you know, at an elementary, the one thing left is the mini blinds and so there's just a few things left. Not just a couple of pictures there as, I'm not sure why Glen Hope picture didn't come in, but it shows the finished elevation, so that work is done now. So as they move the 2020 renovation projects, we'll touch on the elementary school projects and Colleyville Heritage High School. Those were in a package. At the risk of just the time sake, I'm not going to read all this to you. It is available for the public and for you to know where we are. I think we're in a great spot in terms of finishing up. There's a few things left to do, mostly from the safety, security, some of the trim-out work of the electrical systems and data, programming of your systems, those kinds of things. So you can see here, you'll see some similarities from Bear Creek to Heritage to Colleyville Elementary, as Paula flips through here. You'll see some similarities there toward the end of each list. You'll see when furniture starts to arrive. So really a positive milestone there for these campuses. At Bear Creek, just briefly left to right, you'll see some of the finished work, finishing up the collaboration, pardon me, areas. The middle really is the learning commons, kind of dropping ceiling tiles and connecting, final connection of systems. And then on the far right, the finished cabinetry, obviously being protected as ceiling tiles are being installed and lights and electrical devices. So everything's looking really, really good. At Bransford Elementary, again, here you'll see just a list of things that are to be complete, again highlighting the final work on the kiosks and the access control systems, data drops, et cetera. Sprinkler systems, sprinkler drops are being relocated this week. So all the way down to the furniture, district furniture arrives on the 27th. So these are, it seems like quite a few things, but these are kind of those last little things from punch lists and fire marshal reviews of the projects, et cetera. So just a few shots here of some finished work at Bransford, cutting new openings in walls in office areas in the middle there. And then on the far right, a shot of the learning commons and they call Make Safe. You know, they tie up the lights to finish up some of the life safety issues and stuff. So all is looking good. It's going according to plan. Again, left to right, more shots of the collab areas as well as the maker spaces. And so you see the storefront installation, cabinets are installed, starting to drop lights and ceiling tiles and really button up life safety system things going on now. So really looking good. I'm sorry, you did change that. There was a few more pictures. But at Heritage, once again, from the programming of the life safety issues, security kiosks are installed, data drops, et cetera. HVAC unit work is ongoing with those ClearStory ductwork systems. All of your systems are now being programmed from a control standpoint. And a lot of the exterior work is finishing up as well in terms of the ADA issues that were identified and listed in the bond program and those are being cleaned up now as well. Furniture there will arrive on the 25th of the month. So it's pretty exciting stuff when the furniture starts to come. So again, on the left, some finished work. You see the strip lightings, the new LED lights, new ceiling tiles, finished work there. And on the right, completing behind the storefront there, another maker space area from that learning commons. So pretty exciting there at Heritage. Excuse me. At Colleyville Elementary School, overhead ductwork or overhead work is complete. Again, security work, very similar to the previous projects. Motorized shade installation scheduled for this coming weekend. And then the furniture scheduled to arrive this week as well. So lots of good stuff happening there. You'll see in the pictures, the maker space work, finishing up there, just trying to finish up the painting and final touch-up work. Middle is the commons area, looking out with new lighting, new paint, new flooring, and then another collab area on the far right. So really looking good there in the learning commons at Colleyville. And at Colleyville Heritage High School, the entrance vestibule, the stucco application for the finished work is happening. Now, the storefront will be installed, which would include all of the glass during the second week of September. So we're, you know, those were a couple of things that were delayed in shipping. And so they're still feeling some of the effects of the shipping issues and labor issues with the COVID situation. So, but they're working through that. Lee Lewis has done a really good job in communicating with both the city on these areas that wouldn't quite be ready, as well as the district. And so the plan is good. As you go down, the existing PA system, which wasn't operational, is now being worked on. And so the district's working with vendors to make those repairs. The two chillers are installed and operational at the campus, adding the second one to the control system and beginning that replacement of the third chiller here soon. So really lots, lots of good stuff is happening. The overhead door for that student technology repair classroom is delayed, again, due to the COVID situation, and we anticipate that coming early September. So there's a few really nice shots, interior of the commons area. You can see the furniture has arrived and all the finished work, lights are on, everything's operational. So really kind of a nice transformation of those spaces. And then just a couple of shots here, we just wanted to identify some temporary access points that they had to, they had to deal with. How do you get the kids and folks out of the building in an emergency situation while we're waiting for storefront and different things to arrive? And so this was a pretty well-thought-out plan by the team and by Lee Lewis, which was accepted by fire marshals and stuff for emergency egress. So looks kind of funny, but it meets exiting requirements and safety conditions. And so we're just waiting for storefront and they'll button all that up. So looking good. Swim Center, quickly, the, all of the major work has been completed, including the HVAC. So if you can just kind of read through the, here we've had health inspectors visit the site and they'll come back to check chemical levels as they start, really start, but as they just continue to get the air conditioning systems controlled and balanced. And so the project final inspection's on hold because of the existing fire alarm panel and that won't have power and the certificate of occupancy cannot be obtained without a working fire panel. So they're working on that, one of the, one of the issues the fire marshals requiring to be done. But that's, it's just an item for your information. Lee Lewis has been assisting testing all the strobes and all the fire alarm poles last week. And then we're seeking proposals, the district is, to replace and move the fire panels as well. So lots happening with that. You'll see in the pictures here, pretty, pretty nice. Well, I forgot, this was the installation of the new HVAC units on the roof. So they helicopter flew those in recently and so those are now installed. Nice shots there. And then the next, the next slide is the, is the interior of the pool. You can see on the left, the new starting blocks, new fresh finishes, new lighting for the, over the pool. Obviously, water's now in and tile work is done. You can see at the bottom there, so really turned out nice. Very good craftsmanship, I must say, on the tile work and the lighting installation, the installation of those starting blocks. That's often tough to do in an existing condition situation and it turned out really, really nice. So real happy about that. And then a couple of, here at the administration building, the work on the security systems, it continues, scheduled to be complete by the end of this week. So we're really, really close. And that includes the, if you came through the front entry, those two-end security kiosks there that will provide access control and the two glass doors in the corridor now operational there by Dr. Ryan's office. The punch list, remaining items are currently being worked on. It's not lengthy at all, so they're tackling those things. And then we'll inspect all of the exterior work for punch this week as well. So went along really, really nice. And just a few shots, you've seen a couple of these, or maybe the one on the left before, but they're finishing up this final grading and replacing the sod, the grass, and then some of the courtyard work there with the landscaping. And I think there's an exterior shot of the landscaping here, just outside the building. And then just a shot of those glass doors that go into and out of Dr. Ryan's area there. So it turned out really nice. And then quickly, the cross timbers creek study work. I wanted to just touch on this briefly because there's a, there's a good bit of activity going on from our civil engineer. They're studying the stormwater systems now. The, what we're discovering is there's no positive overflow of the systems currently, existing systems. So really any heavy rainfall that produces backup, that just all that additional water is sending to the building instead of away from the building. So we kind of knew that in a, in a big heavy rain, we've seen some of that. And so the study is just trying to identify exactly what's undersized and what's deficient. We're currently verifying the survey of the parking lot area to really study where that water is going so we can capture it and solve the problem. Civil engineer's working on a couple of solutions now with estimated costs associated. So both, they'll study kind of a low end to high end solution or solutions and we'll be studying that with the district here in the near future. At Bear Creek, the drainage channel study goes, is ongoing. Our civil engineer and their crew were onsite on the 18th. The, they expect the final survey to be delivered by the end of this month, so it's coming soon. The geotechnical investigation recommends over excavation and compaction of a lot of this area and use of flowable fill. That's part of the solution or will be. There's also some mention to replace concrete panels at the channel side. There's, you see that picture on the far right, there's a long sort of a whitish shape and then it bends back to the, to the north. That's the drainage channel. And so that's, that's one of the things we're going to be studying in this process. The design phase will take up until mid-November to prepare for city submission. And then the work to be completed, we're estimating, out of the bond scope, expected to be bid out to GCs or subcontractors for permanent remediation. So we're going to bid that out rather than put that under Lee Lewis's contract. So we'll get done a little quicker that way. So that's just an update on those two channel studies. I presented this last month. Nothing's changed here. I just wanted to update you on the 2021, the last package really of projects in the bond program. And really, the one I go to is the, what we call sign and seal, the documents for issuing to Lee Lewis on January the 18th. And so the proposals are due on February the 8th of 2021. And then the contract preparation will be shortly thereafter. So they'll be starting that particular work at that, at that time. So I'd be happy to answer any question. I know I went really fast, but it's kind of late night for you guys, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Thank you again for hanging in there with us. I do have a, I do have a question and since I stepped away from my desk, I don't have my notes. There was a parent that asked about a certain school and if it was going to be completed by September 8th. Can any trustee help me or I need to go get my notes?
That was Heritage Elementary.
Yes, ma'am. What she actually said is she was questioning why the dumpster and the porta potties were still out in the parking lot. And the learning commons were still supposed to be ongoing at this point in time. So, so we will be talking to them. I'm pretty sure Patty has already been talking to them about the removal of those items from the parking lot themselves. Usually we have to have a staging area for them, so that may still be a piece of it. But we'll look at the location and certainly the other to be removed. Their work has already moved to being primarily in the evenings and on the weekends as they move to try to complete these projects. And one of the reasons, in particular at Heritage Elementary, that we are where we are is, is because of the pandemic and the delays to the receipt of HVAC units. And I apologize that I'm in the dark. But our energy management system is working because my light sensor's not coming on. There's not enough activity in my office to turn the light on. So that's the reason for the delay at Heritage and at Bransford, primarily having to do with those HVAC units and somewhat also over at Bear Creek in terms of the learning commons. The offices and some of those items are in place, but we have seen some delays on the physical doors and the door hardware that's needed to attach those. But the campuses are ready.
Thank you, Paula. And Gary. I was gonna say Paula and Paula. Thank you.
Paula and Paul.
There we go. There we go. Any, any questions for Gary from any trustee? No? Thank you again, sir. We really appreciate you.
It's, we've almost seen y'all. Okay, goodnight.
Night. Hi, Gary. We're gonna move on to item I, Review Owner Contingency Expenditures. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, you can see the list of the owner contingency expenditures in the last month and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none. We'll move on to item J, Review the 2020-2021 Board Planning Calendar. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, you can see in the month of August, the board planning calendar had several changes, basically moving from September back to August, the student code of conduct and the parent handbook. basically moving from September back to August, the Student Code of Conduct and the Parent Handbook this evening, and the quarterly investment report and those kinds of things from September. And then you'll also notice that the State Accountability Report, Equality Cup Update have been canceled, basically because we did not have those in the last spring. And then we are going to move the Corporate Sponsor's Annual Report from the Education Foundation to September. Those are the changes to the board planning calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions? None? Move on to item K, request for reports to the board. Do I have any? Doug?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have, as long as COVID going on, that we do have updates on the, what the public health data is each board meeting. I think it's important to have for the, for the trustees and for any continuing in the meeting.
Okay. Any others? Move on to consent agenda for approval, do I have a motion? Jesse?
Yes, I, I move that we accept items A through N on the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, in a second.
One second.
Mindy, thank you. Any questions? Seeing or hearing none, all those in, oh. Only got a couple of you, so I'll go have to, again, go by. Doug?
Approved.
Jesse?
Yes.
Jorge?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Jesse? I already asked you. Louis?
Yes.
And Becky?
Aye.
And I'm a yes. Consent agenda passes seven zero. Any announcements? Dr. Ryan? Anything? Becky?
I know we all took our, this campus liaison positions for this year. And I, I guess an announcement would be, we really made history this week, having an all-virtual start. Whether we wanted to go down in history or not is another question. But I just want to reiterate to Dr. Ryan how much I appreciate the hard work of our teachers and staff over the last six months because this has not been easy navigating the unknown. Things are very different than they were, you know, when we left for spring break, and things got pretty bad, and we still had to make decisions to go forward with the school year. And it, it was really nice to be able to go ahead and still see kids with pictures of their, you know, first day signs and their school clothes, and teachers sharing, you know, exciting things that they'd done with their classrooms, whether it was a virtual classroom or, or a real classroom. And so I, I'm just, I'm really proud of our district and the, the ability that, that our staff has had to meet this challenge. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged tonight.
Thank you.
Jorge?
Just, just following up on Becky's, we, we do understand we want all the kids in school. We all feel the same. But, you know, the feedback, even from people that are not very happy that we didn't start school early, the experience on the online learning has been night and day from the spring. And I just wanted to let you know that a lot of the feedback that we had gotten have been very, very positive. The teachers have done a great job. The Canvas is working great. It's a, it's a, you know, top tool in higher ed, it's a top tool K-12. I really appreciate that we use that. And, you know, one of the positives is like, you know, now they have Canvas experience, so when they go to college, you know, they'll, they'll know it already because that is what most top schools use. But, you know, great job designing the classrooms, the links, all that stuff, you know, it has been very, very good compared to what we had in the spring. So kudos to you guys, great job.
Thank you, Jorge. And that is, and that is what we keep hearing, is that it's, it's, y'all, y'all kept telling the parents it's going to be totally different from, from spring, and that's what we hear that it is. So I agree, I think we all agree. So thank you to, to the entire leadership team. Any other questions, or? I can't see everybody. Seeing none. I need a motion to adjourn?
Lisa?
Yes, sir, I can see you.
Yes, I'd like to move that we adjourn, please.
Thank you, Jesse, in a second.
I'll second.
Louis, thank you, Louis. All those in favor? Motion, let's see. Mindy?
Yes.
Becky?
Aye.
Jorge? Jorge?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Doug?
I'm still having fun, I want to stay. I'm just kidding.
Louis?
Yes.
And then I'm a yes. Motion carries to adjourn seven zero. Thank you, guys. Thank y'all for being patient. Kyle, thank you so much, again and again and again for all that you do and getting us through tonight. So we really appreciate you, Kyle, more than, more than you, you and your team, more than you will ever, ever understand. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's, that is it. Good seeing you guys in person and, and virtual, all in one day. So I appreciate it, so y'all stay well and stay safe. We'll see you again. Bye, night.
Goodnight.